Commissioners. I thought I was loud enough, I didn't think I needed a mic.
Yes, yes.
So, um. Do we have a motion regarding approval of the agenda? Mr. Adams, I think that you were. The morning item four from the seven o'clock meeting.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair, sir. Item twenty point five. This is. That's better. For the. For a figure. Staff. There's a problem. Staff received. That's better. This is here. The audit. Sit stat process. Staff. Twenty point four.
If there is a demand, it would be not. Or then if you can put it, have to take it first at the seven o'clock meeting, but if anybody is here and does want it to be heard, I don't think it's, you know, to hear from one side and not the other, um, situation.
Well, it was my understanding that the matter need to be pulled from the agenda anyway, um, to give the heirs time to resolve their differences so that whatever the board needed to do at that time, we would do, but I understand, so we'll make this motion at seven o'clock when the others who are in attendance.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Travis.
Everybody gets a chance to be heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, other than the potential for the seven o'clock items, uh, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda. We'll second.
All in favor? All right. So. Let's go. Item five point one. Mr. Logenbaum. How are you?
Great, how are you today?
Good, sir.
Um, Jim Logenbaum, I'm the Transportation Director for Pender Adult Services. We are applying for our grants through NC DOT and the federal funding, um, our, our grants are the fifty-three eleven administrative grant, the fifty-three ten operating grant, and the combined capital grant. Um, the fifty-three eleven administrative.
Hold on just one second. Can everybody hear him?
No.
Can, can you pull that mic up to you? I'm having problems hearing you too.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Jim Logenbaum, I'm the Transportation Director for Pender Adult Services. How's this? I never speak into a mic. I, I'm usually very loud enough as well, and when I preach on Sunday, they try to tell me not to use the mic. So I'm the Transportation Director for Pender Adult Services. We are applying for three grants through NC DOT and the federal government. Um, one is the fifty-three eleven administrative grant, the other is the fifty-three ten operating grant, and the last one is the combined capital grant. The fifty-three eleven administrative grant covers all of our costs to run the program. They're, they're offering us two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We need a fifteen percent match on that, which is thirty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. The fifty-three ten operating grant goes towards transportation for elderly and disabled. Um, it's a ninety thousand dollar.
For the meals on wheels programs?
I don't do meals on wheels.
And transport.
We just do transportation for el, for medical, um, college, employment. Uh, we bring folks to the senior center.
Okay. So this has nothing to do with delivery of meals?
No.
Okay.
No, that's a separate department within our, within our agency. But the operating grant is a, is a match grant, it's a fifty percent match grant, but we match that grant with our Rural Operating Assistance Program funding.
With your rural what?
Rural Operating Assistance Program, which is another program that comes from the state.
Okay.
Um, it's, and that's where we match that from, I just need your approval to go ahead and send in the application for it.
So the operating grant monies, what is, how much is involved in that?
It's, uh, ninety thousand with a fif, well, a hundred and eighty thousand with a fifty percent match of ninety thousand.
And the ninety thousand that matches it comes from another grant funding.
From the roping, right.
So, for a total of, um. Four hundred and forty thousand dollars to run your program, the county will, uh, match, uh, thirty-two thousand.
And then the combined capital pro, yeah, is, that's, uh, for a replacement van, for a van that's outused, out, outsle, out, has outlived its useful life, um, that's ninety-six hundred, add a ten percent match, the, the van itself is ninety-six thousand, and the total would be.
Ninety-six thousand, not ninety-six hundred?
It's ninety-six hundred for, i- is the match.
Okay, all right.
So the total, the total we're requesting today is forty-two thousand, sixty-six dollars.
So you're requesting the thirty-two thousand for the fifteen percent match of the two hundred and sixteen thousand grant?
Right.
And you're asking for a ten percent match from the county to replace a van?
Yes.
Okay. What do you do with old van?
They go to auction.
Okay, and the proceeds go where?
Back into trips and. Just covering stuff that where folks fall short on the fare.
How, how many vehicles do you have in your fleet and how are they, uh, replaced?
We have ten in our fleet and that, once they hit a hundred thousand miles, then we start looking to replace them. Um, they're, they're replaced by mileage, so we only have one that's available for FY twenty-four to be replaced.
Were these matching funds in this van contribution, Mr. Manager, was that a budget item?
It's my understanding that that is a budget item.
So we're just approving the expenditure of the ma, of the item, of this budgeted money?
And the grant application. And the grant application itself, the authority to apply for the grant.
Okay, all right. Any questions from anyone? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. A public hearing. Public hearing.
Public hearing?
I think it's a public hearing.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or concerns or comments? Do I have a motion?
Do we need a motion on this?
No, we don't need a motion on this.
Public hearing.
Okay, so that's all we do, right?
Just a hearing.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, public hearing, item five point two. Mr. Logenbaum, that was you. And item six point one. Presentation from INCOR staff. Mr. Adams, you're up again.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to introduce Maggie Botaglan. She is the Director of Mitigation with the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, or INCOR. She wanted to provide the board with an update on a program that she's been working on for Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane Florence recovery victims, so I'll pass it over to her to provide that update.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Let me see. Okay, so my name is Maggie Botaglan. I am the Director of Mitigation, like Mr. Adams said, for the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency.
Hold on, hold on just one second. Can y'all hear her?
No.
No.
Um, is there an IT guy here that can help us with this mic? Obviously, we need some help.
The whole problem is, it's not long enough.
Do we have somebody that can help?
It's Mal.
Do we have an IT guy?
You have to get right down on it.
I can lean a little closer to it as well. Is that, yeah. Can everybody hear me if I like lean closer?
Yeah, I got a lot of questions about this buyout program, so I hope you can inform us.
Mm-hmm.
Back to what's going to be taken place.
So, yes, what I'm here to do is to provide an overview of a program that's not yet operational. Um, that is not yet operational in Pender County, so this is, would be a new opportunity for the county, um, but it is one that I believe would, you know, help, help support you all.
So you're not here to discuss the program, buyout program for the homes after Florence?
So this is a new program. I believe what you're referring to is probably the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program?
Yes.
No, I'm not here to discuss that program. This is a different one.
Can you discuss it?
Um, no law, no. I used to work there, um, so I have some background knowledge. I worked really closely with Dan Adams.
Can you tell us why our homeowners still haven't been bought out yet?
I wish I could. I wish I could, but I hope that this program may be able to, you know, offer some assistance.
So this is a new improved government program?
Yes, with a different source of funding, and I believe it's much more efficient.
All right.
Okay, shall I get started?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, sir. So again, my name is Maggie Botaglan. I am the Director of Mitigation for the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, here to speak, uh, or here to speak to you all about the strategic buyout program. Um, I've got a brief agenda here. I will discuss the background for our office, the framework of the program, an overview of the program, what we offer to folks who decide to participate, the effort that we're undertaking now to expand the program, any next steps that would be applicable, and of course, there's time built in for questions at the end, but I'm happy to answer those as I go along as well. So, like I said, I work for the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, which is a depart, or a division within the Department of Public Safety. We are a sister agency to North Carolina Emergency Management, which administers the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, so different offices, different sources of funding there. You may be familiar with some programs that my office does, uh, does run. One of those is the Rebuild NC Homeowner Recovery Program. That too is funded by a different source of funding than the one I'm here to speak about, but it is actively accepting applications and it provides assistance to help repair, reconstruct, replace, or elevate homes, or reimburse homeowners for completed repairs, and that program is funded at more than five hundred million dollars. We also have additional programs, uh, to support affordable housing or multifamily investments, infrastructure, public housing, resilient community programs, a homeownership assistance program, various planning initiatives, and, uh, some other resiliency programming as well. The map is not showing so great on this slide, but on that one, you can see here that these are the co, uh, counties that we are currently active in. These highlighted counties represent what HUD considers to be the most impacted and distressed communities, so right now, my staff and I are looking to expand the program in the counties highlighted as orange on this map, and of course, Pender County is one of those. Our buyout program, before we jump in, it's a little bit more consolidated, a little bit more targeted than the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So we have two buyout zones that we've developed in coordination with Dan Adams and others from the county, and so before I go into policies, I want to sort of provide you with an overview so you can frame what we're talking about here. I want to flag that these are very much preliminary, these are where we're at right now, we can make changes to them, um, you know, but we're, this is sort of what we're here to discuss. What we would do is we would allow folks who own properties, and again, the map is showing up not great on this, but on this slide, it's a little bit better, um, we would look to buy out properties that are within those red, uh, marked areas. It is a voluntary buyout program, so we wouldn't expect to get a hundred percent. We would, you know, work to make sure that everybody's informed.
What about the folks that are already involved in a buyout program and they're not being bought out? Are they precluded or shut out from this new and improved program?
If they are being served by that program actively, we would, um, they would be served by that program if they are, have withdrawn from that program.
I'm sorry, say that again, they would be certified what?
If they are in the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, they would be ineligible for our program, however.
They would be ineligible?
Yes.
If they've already been certified in another program?
If they're, if they've been bought out, yes. If they withdraw from the hazard.
Okay, what do you mean by bought out? Does that mean they can withdraw if they have not been received funding, but they have made application?
Yes.
Is that what you mean by?
Yes, ma'am.
Bought out?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so once they've actually been purchased by another program, we could not purchase them.
Right.
But if they withdrew, if they were found to be ineligible at any point for another program, they would be eligible to apply for ours. We do make, um, we, we have staff that's very, very good at finding folks to ensure that they're informed about this opportunity, and so we want to make sure everybody here knows that this is an opportunity that's available to them.
So, have you and, and your program identified with the assistance of our county folks, uh, how many homeowners would be eligible for this program?
So it would be everybody potentially, right? There's nuances to ownership. You would have to own property in these areas in order to be eligible. I've got some slides on specific eligibility criteria later.
Okay.
This has seventy-eight properties in it, and there's another one as well.
Okay, all right, but the, um. The specific locations, how did you determine what properties would be, um, suitable for your program?
Um, so our funding does come from HUD, so we do look for, for, or for areas of, uh, North Carolina that are low to moderate income, and so we look for neighborhoods within those areas. We look at areas that have a really substantial flood risk, and so again, on this map, you can see it better. The area that's red is the floodway, and that is a one in ten percent chance, or a one in ten chance of being flooded on, you know, from FEMA's flood maps. And then the other area above that is the flood zone, so that's a hundred year flood plain. So this area in particular, the other one as well, you'll see is very, uh, has a very strong flood probability. We also looked for properties that are either severe repetitive loss or repetitive loss, which is a designation from the National Flood Insurance Program, that marks how frequently a property has been damaged in the past. So we look for areas that we believe will help us, uh, reach our goals from a HUD perspective of serving folks that are low to moderate income, and then areas that are at an exceptional risk for flooding in the future.
So you have to be in the flood plain, begin, I mean, you got to be living in that flood plain, the last hundred year flood plain?
Mm-hmm. So ultimately, you have to be in, um, in an area that, that we designate as a buyout zone, and again, that's a collaborative effort between the state and the ci, county. Um, in some situations, we are doing buyouts in other communities outside of the flood plain, and that's because it helps to support the local government's resiliency goals or mitigation goals, and we have a little bit more latitude than some of those other programs to do buyouts outside the flood plain. But in this case, in Pender County, both of these areas are entirely within the flood plain. Okay?
I know that's the area that really, every time it have a, a flood, I mean, a storm that place really floods a lot.
Mm-hmm.
If you're at an intersection.
Yeah, so this is close to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is one of our areas. Again, it's seventy-eight total properties. All of it's in the flood plain, thirty percent of it's estimated, or I'm sorry, seventy percent of it's estimated to be in the floodway, and we also do want to note that most of these are vacant lots. So again, our staff, that's an eligible property for, for our program, but we do a lot of outreach to ensure that folks who own these properties know about the program and are making an informed decision about whether or not to apply.
Very good. So what is the amount of funding available?
So this grant is total, we don't have independent budgets for each community because the state's administering it, which is something that I have another slide on as well. Uh, we have a hundred and eighty-two million dollar budget right now to administer these activities across the state. We have looked at everywhere that we're hoping to expand to and believe that we can do that with our budget.
So that's eighty-two million to be divided across a hundred counties of North Carolina.
So just the counties, and it's a hundred and eighty-two million, so it's, um, a pretty significant allocation. Only the counties that are highlighted on this slide are eligible. I believe it's seventeen or sixteen. And so these are the counties that are most impacted and distressed, which is a.
Seventeen counties.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's very substantial.
Yes, because we are such a targeted program, we're able to really make sure we have a handle on the budget, so we're very confident that we're not going to take applications for people who, uh, would not, who we wouldn't be able to fund.
Very grateful for that. So the process starts with our planning department, is that correct?
Yeah, so, um, my staff and I, we determined initial buyout zones based on some of those markers that I spoke about earlier, and then we brought them to the county staff, uh, who, through nego, like through collaboration, we've expanded the buyout zone in some areas, retracted it in some areas. Again, these are preliminary and we're happy to continue to make those revisions. These are just what we feel confident with moving forward, that they meet all of our criteria and that we'd be able to fund them fully.
Thank you.
Yeah. So this is the second buyout zone that we have. This is again, uh, along the northeast Cape Fear River and close to White Stocking Road. This is a much larger buyout zone by number of par, properties, so there's two hundred and twenty-four properties in total here, and all of it, again, is in the flood plain with about ninety percent of it currently in the floodway. They, again, are mostly vacant lots, uh, with us, our data indicates that a hundred and fourteen of these are currently unimproved vacant lots, and twenty-three of these are already owned by the county, which we take to mean that there's already been investment and acquisitions within this area. For our program's overview, it is a voluntary program, that's really, really important for everybody, so again, we want to reach out to people, make sure that they're informed about the, about the program, but we do work to permanently reduce risk to the life and property of North Carolinians by purchasing properties that are either already impacted by a storm or are at risk for future damage. After these properties are purchased using grant funding, the ownership is then, oh, they're owned by the county, um, and the structures are demolished, and we put a deed restriction on those properties such that nothing can ever be built there again. Again, you know, a voluntary program, we've been really closely coordinated with, uh, Mr. Adams and his staff, and it is a program designed to permanently reduce risk and increase the overall community's resilience. We touched on some of these points, but this is a program that's fully funded through HUD by the Community Development Block Grant for mitigation. There is no state or local share required, so it would be a hundred percent fully funded by the federal government. The North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency administers this program, so we have case management that we provide to applicants, so everybody would have a speci, an assigned individual who would be there to answer their questions. We also have all of the services already on board to do boundary surveys and appraisals and title reports and all of the other supportive services that are necessary. Um, again, the property is sold directly to the local government. We will demolish that structure and any, make sure that the property is, uh, graded and ceded, and then the local government is responsible for ongoing maintenance. What that means, ongoing maintenance, is up to your determination. There's no requirement that it be actively maintained, it can return to wild swampland if that's what is decided at the local level. This, again, slide just reiterates, uh, some of our program's goals, so we do aim to reduce risk to life and property of North Carolinians. Buyouts are a, a very serious and permanent mitigation effort, but they are the most significant and the most impactful because they do permanently remove that risk, uh, from, from those specific properties. I'll speak to our incentives in another couple of slides, but we do really work to be very targeted in our buyouts, and so we look to, uh, do them in continuous areas, which, as opposed to the checkerboarding effect that other programs, uh, pursue, we believe it allows us to preserve the community character and the tax base for the county as much as possible. Uh, we also support community planning and resiliency, and a lot of communities, our buyout zones are directly supportive of long-term community goals, and we look to support areas that are high need, again, indicated by low to moderate income and demonstrated past flood risk. We spoke to this a little bit earlier, but these are the criteria that we look at to identify the buyout zones, so again, we look for properties that are severe repetitive loss, we look at areas where there have, has been a lot of interest in the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Uh, we look to people who received assistance from FEMA's Individual Assistance Program and then just flood plain data overall. Currently, we do have fifteen of these buyout zones in six different counties across the state, and our applicants are very happy with the process so far. As a policy overview, so we do have one set of policies that's available on our website that, uh, is across the state held, uh, everybody's going under the same policies. So we do offer a current fair market buyout, which is a big difference from the other program that offers a pre-storm buyout. We did this for a couple of reasons. One, it's been a very long time since these storms, and in a lot of these communities, real estate markets have improved beyond what they were in twenty sixteen or twenty eighteen. Making this decision also allows us to offer more generous incentives for folks, which I'll go into, um, in a couple of slides. We have two different buckets of incentives, a risk reduction incentive and an affordable housing incentive. And additionally, for those that are familiar with these kinds of grants, there's a principle called duplication of benefits that requires that we look at previous assistance received and make a judgment as to whether or not our benefit is duplicating those, um, efforts. By doing a current fair market buyout, according to the federal government, we're not giving a benefit, and so we don't have to do that process unless somebody's looking for those additional incentives. We do have independent eligibility criteria for this program, so we look, uh, at the specific type of property. We want to make sure that folks are not dual enrolled in other programs, so this goes to your question earlier. We look to see if people have been, are, are active in the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and are being bought out in that program, or. and are being bought out in that program, or our other Rebuild NC Homeowner Recovery Program. We also look to make sure that applicants currently own the property in order to sell it and that they have the ability to sell it. So, the title of that property must be clean. And then, of course, any liens that are on this property must be retired before or at closing, but the program's funds can be used to help satisfy that. We are able and positioned as a program to offer more assistance when it comes to clearing title issues than some of these other programs. And we also do offer short sale negotiation assistance or other, other opportunities that other programs don't offer to support our applicants. In order to be eligible for this program, the property must be located in one of those approved buyout zones. And so, the drafts that I showed you earlier, if, if Pender County decided to move forward, you have to own property in those areas in order to be eligible. We also look for properties that are single-family residential properties or properties that are vacant lands, or on case-by-case basis, properties that are non-residential properties. We also do have program caps on the number of properties that an individual can apply for and its parcel size. So, we want to make sure that we're really coordinated with the local government, again, to make sure that you guys are, are not encumbered with substantial parcel properties. At a high level, we do have an eight-step process that allows people to participate in this program. We have our application intake, an eligibility review, then we order a title report. Then, we do all of the appraisal and other inspections that are required of the program. Before we make the offer to the applicants, at that point, we make the offer to all folks who own that property. If they accept it, we move to closing. Once it's closed, it's transitioned, again, transferred, excuse me, directly to Pender County, and the applicant engagement significantly ends. Past that, we work on demolishing the property and closing it out for the grant. Again, we are designed as a program to be as supportive as possible for both applicants and local government communities. Each applicant has a dedicated case manager who will provide them with a consistent point of contact throughout the process. So, hopefully, that reduces questions that you all get from anybody who would apply for this program. We also make sure that folks have clear titles. And again, we can provide assistance in clearing any title clouds that do exist. And one final sort of added benefit of this program is that we actively have an agreement with the North Carolina Housing Coalition to provide housing counseling services to all applicants for our program. For most cases, that is a voluntary process. They don't have to do it, but it is something that we really believe will help people recover from these storms and be able to, to move forward confidently in a safe, in a safer location. When we make an offer, well, before we make an offer, we have the program do appraisals. And so, we have a fleet of, of certified general appraisals, appraisers, who go out and determine the offer price based on the current fair market value of that property. We send out an offer to all applicant, or all property owners, who must all accept it in order for us to move forward. Should any of the one, or should any owner decide not to move forward, then we, again, because it's a voluntary program, allow them to, to make that decision. If it is accepted, we do go to closing. We offer a very generous incentive package, in my opinion. We do this for a couple of reasons. Number one, this is a voluntary program, so we want to encourage people to apply. We also have structured our incentives to encourage households to relocate locally, so within Pender County, to help reduce any losses on the tax base. We also, you know, recognize that properties that are in areas that are high risk, at high flood risk, generally have a lower value than other comparable homes in lower risks, lower-risk areas. So, our incentives are structured to provide folks with additional capital to buy houses in safer areas. Our incentives, people must have been individually impacted by the storm, so they must be applying for their primary residence. And folks that are not applicant owner, or not applicants to the program, additional owners are not eligible to receive those incentives. Most of our incentives are restricted to folks who are within certain area median income ranges. So, most of these are offered to folks who are low to moderate income. I'm going to continue on, if that's okay. I just noticed that. So, one of our incentives, the primary, or the risk reduction incentive, is $10,000 or $5,000 in addition to the current fair market value of the property. This is to encourage somebody to move, again, outside a risky area. $10,000 if somebody moves within the same county. $5,000 if they move within the state of North Carolina. And folks must demonstrate that they move outside the floodplain in order to receive this. We have three different affordability incentives. So, some folks move from a homeownership situation to a rental situation. Those folks would be eligible for our Affordable Rental, which is up to a $17,000 reward, or award to supplement rent for one year. We also have our Affordable Homeownership Incentive, which requires folks to work with housing counselors and is a contribution to the purchase price of a new home. This varies by county. The maximum award is $100,000 to $200,000, and here in Pender County, it is $200,000. So, that's on top of what we offer to the property, or for the property, excuse me. And then, we also have a matching down payment incentive, which is an up to $50,000 maximum, one-for-one matching down payment reward. So, as far as next steps, we're here to formalize this relationship to, to gauge whether or not the county is interested. And, you know, if, if the county decided to move forward, we would draft an agreement and make sure to share that with you all so that you can view the legal aspects of this, or of this program. But, you know, we do believe that this would be a very beneficial program for Pender County because it's a voluntary targeted and impactful buyout program that hopefully fills gaps of other programs that Pender County has had recent experience with. So, the next steps, yeah, that would, those would sort of be them, I guess. And I'm happy to take any questions that anybody may have.
All right. This gentleman in the second row has a question. Stand up, sir, come to the podium. So, we can all hear you. Yes, sir. You're being recorded for posterity.
George Meiser, Hampstead, North Carolina.
Pull it down, please, so we can hear you.
George Meiser, Hampstead, North Carolina.
Thank you.
On this program here, we see the flooded houses and others. We read about all that. And incentive for people to move, if their insurance covers everything and then they apply, do they get their money double?
That's a good question.
Yes. So, flood insurance proceeds would be a benefit that, as I spoke to earlier, duplication of benefits is something that we don't have to look at as a program. Now, depending on the nuances of their flood insurance policy, we may have to make some adjustments to any incentives that are offered to them, but for the general purchase of their property, we would not have to look at that.
Sign me up.
Okay.
All right. Do we have any questions, comments?
So, this money is going to be immediately available once you get all the process done.
Yes.
Be secure.
Yes, sir. So, we have this money already at the state level. So, we would provide the agreement through Dan Adams to you all for review. Make any adjustments that, you know, are determined to be necessary to the buyout zones through that process. If you all reviewed the agreement and found it to be agreeable, we would then proceed to take, or we would do some community outreach so that the folks who own property in these areas are aware of this opportunity. And we would, from there, start taking applications, and they would move right through our process. But, yes, the funding's immediately available.
Right. Mr. Adams, would it be possible in the near future to get a, a staff opinion, which includes some overlay of this program and the program that we've been dealing with since Florence, for people that have applied, been approved, and have not yet received their funds for buyout programs?
Yes, ma'am, definitely. And I think this program would be a great supplement to that program. As Maggie mentioned, fill some of those gaps. But, we can absolutely put, put together something, staff presentation to the board.
And how it will help our folks that have already applied but have not yet received funding? It's my understanding that they could be suitable for consideration in this program at fair market value. Look forward to hearing from you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Adams. Anyone else? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. All right.
I think there's another question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
My name is Winifred Meiser, and I live in Hampstead.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear one word you say.
My name...
Step back. Now, speak.
My name is Winifred Meiser. I live in Hampstead.
Yes, ma'am.
And my question was, I think this whole program sounds really terrific for a lot of people. And I'm sure as the money is coming from the federal, it's still coming from the public's pocket, taxpayers. So, I'm asking a question that some people who are maybe kind of listening to all these kind of things, thinking, "I'm going to run out tomorrow and buy all the, some of these properties up. Then, I'll get all that money." And these, you know, there might be a lot of seniors living there, low-income people that didn't have a lot of knowledge about what's going on yet. Do you have some kind of backup plan to make sure that they have to be having on the property a certain amount of time or something like that, so you don't have that kind of effect?
I can't hear what she says.
I can hear a word.
I cannot hear one word. Mr. Adams, can you get this fixed, please? This is impossible.
Generally, the question was for folks who...
She won't get close to it. Ma'am, you need to get closer to the mic.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, absolutely. So, the question, just to summarize it, was, you know, we're identifying these areas where buyouts are potential to move forward. What happens if folks who currently own those properties are, are reached out to by somebody who's interested, has heard about this potential program, is interested in, in particip, or is interested in purchasing their property and then reaping the benefits of this program?
Well, those properties are being taken out. They are not to be built on again, is that correct?
That is correct. I think that...
And they're taking out, taken out of our tax base.
Correct.
The county will no longer get tax funds for any of these properties that are bought out.
That is correct. Yeah. I think that her question was to what happens in between now and when we are able to purchase out these properties, if they're purchased by somebody else. And so, for that, we do have policies that are in place to make sure that folks who, who purchase, or to make sure that folks either owned them at the time of the storm and are eligible for incentives, or don't purchase them after that.
Thank you. Is there a volume on that mic that can be turned up?
He's adjusted the volume from the back panel several times.
Tell him to turn it up, because we're having problems here. So, now, we come to 6.2. Ms. Olivia Chavez-Carroll for the North Carolina Military Business Center Overview. Professional at Cape Fear Community College. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be with you. My name is Scott Dornick. I'm the Executive Director of the North Carolina Military Business Center, which is a statewide component of the North Carolina Community College System with 15 offices across the state. Today's briefing will be provided by Olivia Chavez-Carroll, who is our business development professional at Cape Fear Community College. We look forward to any questions you might have, and I hope you, I hope you can help us get businesses into the federal marketplace. Thank you. Olivia?
Thank you. You're right, ma'am, it is better.
Yeah, much better.
In your packets, if you'd like, just so you know, in your packets are the slides themselves, as well as additional information that you may have questions about, that we can discuss after the presentation. As Scott said, I am Olivia Chavez-Carroll. I'm with the, I'm actually physically located at the Cape Fear Community College Union Station Building. And that is where I can physically be located. I am personally responsible for the Pender, Wilmington, New Hanover, and Burnt Brook Counties, so you will probably see me a lot. And I will have lots of questions about how we can help Pender County businesses. Who are we? So, the North Carolina Military Business Center is a statewide entity. We are the only, we are the only business here in North Carolina that is a state entity that is solely focused on that military business environment. We are focused on small businesses entering the federal contracting system. So, that would be where we, full force, handhold, help those small businesses earn and make that, those federal dollars. We are the only state in the country that actually has this program. So, state dollars were set aside for this program to be created. We, what makes it unique about North Carolina is that, you know, as we know, the military presence is extremely large here in North Carolina. And we have, we're fourth in the country as far as our size, and as well as, the good thing is that it's throughout the state. It is not just on the eastern seaboard. Additionally, another factor is the, the amount of service members that are exiting the military. 18,000 are exiting the military out of North Carolina themselves per year. Additionally, of the amount of annual funds that we have been able to create and assist with have reached almost $80 billion. So, we want to ensure that we are offering Pender County companies the same access. It's a way to be able to get into the, what I call the SAM.gov waters with more of a straightforward-moving area versus having to navigate a federal system with your, with a blindfold. So, what we do is we help them navigate those waters, especially when over 12.5% of it is the gross state product for North Carolina. So, that's how much that we are affecting the state of North Carolina. And as you can see in this heat map, the, Pender County, my goal is to make Pender County orange. Ideally, it would be great if we can make Pender County red. But, this, this heat map shows that federal, federal funds in North Carolina are not stationed in just one area. It's not just one company that's dominating in North Carolina. It's throughout the state, and that's what we do. We, we look for other companies, small companies, small businesses, that meet the criterias, and we help them, if they don't meet it, we help them and share with them how to get to the criteria. How do we get to the point that you can apply and you can fight for some of this funding? Our goal is all about leveraging the federal business opportunities. There are billions and billions of dollars that are set aside for small businesses, women-owned businesses, 8A, veterans, that are, our, our citizens are not taking advantage of. Your constituents are not taking advantage of, that need to take advantage of this. Our goal is to increase the federal revenue for business, which would increase the, the federal revenue for your county, as well as support the technology and transition of federal agencies. We also work directly with military into the workforce. So, as I said about earlier, that 18,000 that are coming out of North Carolina, well, we want those to stay here. We want those veterans to stay in North Carolina and be part of our workforce. We want them to stay here and build their businesses. What better than to have someone with those clearances and those certifications stay here in North Carolina versus going off to another state? Our partners are at the state level, the federal level, the private sector. We work with SBA. We work directly with the state of North Carolina. We work with SCORE. So, we want to mentor them. We don't want to just say, "Hey, this is how, this is, here's the checklist, go at it." We want, we mentor them because the goal is to have a returning customer. It's not about one-stop shop, at one time, here's your Snickers bar and go. We want them to return and, and constantly have them going in and bidding constantly for these contracts. Textiles is one of the, that's the number one here in the, in North Carolina. Number two, are government contracts. So, that is why it's so important. And the Community College System is another, that's why we live within the Community College System. So, working directly with them and the workforce development and business allows us the opportunity to assist those businesses so they get, get them up to par where they need to be in order to have these, the opportunity to do these contracts. You know, we talk about operations at the colleges, future, future opportunities for these businesses, current opportunities. We work directly from federal opportunities for now. Let's say FEMA has a need for tents, and you have a company that does tents, and their next codes or their particular codes for the federal government shows tents. We will be shooting, giving, sharing with them those contracts directly. They don't have to go digging through SAM. They don't have to go digging through SAM. They don't stop, they don't have to go see, looking through the system. And you'll see here in your, your maps, you'll see the, the black stars. That's where we're all located. There's fifteen, uh, offices. Our headquarters is out of Fayetteville Technical Community College. That's where you'll find Scott and our headquarters. We are a robust team of contractors and, um, and just the great partners. We also work within the Dev Tech, um, which I'll touch on later. But this is, this is our machine, MatchForce. MatchForce.org is our machine that was created for us, and it's, and that is what we work with. We, we are able, our IT department, what they did is they are able to pull, extract data from USA, I mean, excuse me, from SAM.gov. They extract those contracts. They give it to us, you know, they lay it out for us, and then we in turn send it to our, our customers, basically. Right? Because our, our, um, fellow business owners are our customers. So we help them make sure that they're getting these contracts one-on-one. And that MatchForce is very, um, special because every day at three o'clock, if they're connected with us, at three PM, they will receive an email to every single government contract that their next codes are associated with in our system at three PM. So if they're, if they want to, um, to have that additional help, they'll have it. So it's key for them to be able to work with, I know that a lot of small businesses are unsure because organizations come and go, but we've been around since two thousand and five, and we're not planning to go anywhere. As long as we're doing our jobs, I know that we will continue to be funded. Our resources, we have our website, which is ncmbc.us. I know you guys can read that, but I just wanted to make sure to point it out, especially to people in the audience. If you have a small business, please make sure that you take that down. Uh, we do have a lot of resources and trainings that we do online. We, uh, reach out to all of our, um, all of the folks that are part of our, all of our, uh, customers, and we make sure that they have access to all of these trainings. I'd like to give a special invitation to all of you here today. We have the, um, two thousand and twenty-three Summit that we are having here in, well, in Wilmington, North Carolina. We are doing, we have it every year, and it is the Southeast Region Federal Construction Summit, April twelfth to the thirteenth. And the following one will be in May, and that's for textiles. And then the next one will be in June, and that's gonna be in Chapel Hill, and that's for medical. That's medical, biomedical, and biodefense. It's also in your folders. But these are, we already have, um, a variety, we have quite a few, I want to say at least five generals that have already confirmed, as well as, uh, over a dozen, uh, DOD contractors that will be there. Uh, DOD offices, excuse me, not contractors, but the actual offices from the DC-Virginia area that will be coming to this. So this is where these business owners need to be. They need to be coming to these events that we hold that, and this isn't about us making any money, which is even better, because this is all about them. This is about them coming to a place where they are going to be able to meet and greet and rub elbows with the people that are going to say yes or no to their contracts. Our staff, like we said, Scott Dornick is our Executive Director. Courtney is up at Fayetteville. I mean, it's, she is in Raleigh?
Charlotte.
Charlotte, that's right. She's in Charlotte, and I am here in Wilmington. Pending any questions, that's my brief.
All right, so if a small business owner has any questions about whether he wants to be involved in federal contracts, he contacts you.
Yes, ma'am.
And you will give them, you're in a position to give them the criteria for even, uh, being considered for a federal contract, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and if they're not, um, qualified, then you can help them qualify.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so again, verbally, can you tell us the website that any Pender County business owner can go on to to get information or contact information for your offices and for assistance by the North Carolina Military Business Center?
Yes, ma'am. That website is www.ncmbc.us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any comments, any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question.
Sure.
How are you disseminating this information to our businesses? How are our businesses knowing about this program? Great program.
Thank you. So one of the things, um, well, I can tell you what I'm doing now, and then I will definitely have Scott, um, share the rest of that. So for me, since I am, um, brand new here, I just started with the program in December. I am new to North Carolina, so I am actually in love with this, uh, new area that we are living in. Um, but for me, what I'm doing is I'm coming to community events. I'm coming here. I'm requesting to be able to speak to the commissioners. I'm, I go to the, um, Chamber of Commerce. I am going, I am making myself available to the community at where they're at. So that's one way, uh, as well as meeting up with different, uh, other organizations that are helping other business owners. So I am, um, meeting up with, uh, One Million, uh, I believe it's called One Million Cups with U, um, UNCW, meeting up with, um, um, a few other that are working within the minority communities, as well as within, um, the, um, um, the different areas of the, the federal government contracting, so that this way we can try to reach as many of the different areas because of how they're set aside. Because we do get a lot of set asides, so I try to reach, I'm trying to find which groups are helping those businesses. And Scott?
Uh, good answer. Uh, well, thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate this. So a- as, as Olivia mentioned, the military, the defense economy is the second-largest sector of our state's economy. It's eighty billion dollars a year. We do over seven billion dollars in federal contracts in North Carolina. We should double that. The biggest challenge we have in growing the defense economy in North Carolina is not a lack of opportunity. On MatchForce today, there are over thirty thousand contract opportunities. Our biggest obstacle for growing the defense economy is getting businesses engaged and into the federal marketplace. We do that by making public presentations, working with partners, chambers, community colleges, small business centers, university system, to get the word out to small businesses. Businesses often, out of, out of lack of knowledge of the federal marketplace, self-select, no. They don't understand that twenty-three percent of federal contracts are set aside for small business. There's terrific opportunity for small businesses, not only with the Department of Defense, but for contracting with other agencies as well. So we encourage all small businesses to consider federal contracting as a subcontractor, as a prime. We have the best infrastructure of any state in the country to help businesses get started, to grow, and to leverage new markets like the defense economy.
Where does the funding for this program come from?
The funding is from the, uh, General Assembly to the, uh, North Carolina Community College System. The annual budget for the Military Business Center is two million dollars, two point one million dollars. We have a staff of twenty-eight across the state.
Two million over what period?
Uh, over one year. Two million dollars a year, two point one.
Is this a renewable project, or does it have to be renewed?
It, it is on recurring funding. We've been in existence since two thousand and five. We went through a funding review with the state in two thousand and nine and, and have had, uh, recurring funding since two thousand and nine as a line item in the community college budget.
It's good this program's out there for a lot of contractors and people that feel like an obstacle course to try to get a contract. That'll, it's a lot to go through, so it's good that you're gonna give them that information.
Well, that's a great question. So the Military Business Center was started on the premise that we have great opportunity with the federal government. There's plenty of contract opportunities. That we have great business capacity in the state. That we're constantly developing good businesses through our small business centers, our community colleges, SBTDC, and other resources. What was missing was anybody identifying real opportunities. In other words, looking at the demand side of the procurement equation. It's great to build the supply side of terrific businesses, which we have in our state. Nobody was looking at the demand side, and what does the federal government actually want to buy? The biggest obstacle the businesses have told us is understanding where the opportunities are. So through MatchForce and through our business development team that are all focused on federal agencies, they source these contracts directly to the businesses every day, and then they have the ability, uh, most of our, uh, folks have twenty-five, thirty years of government contracting experience, either on the government side or on the industry side. They can connect businesses with opportunities. They can help those businesses navigate the federal procurement process, understand those solicitations. When you download a solicitation, sixty pages to buy a bolt, that can be a bit intimidating. But our folks can translate those opportunities, help businesses understand it, prepare good, solid quotes and proposals to be competitive either as a prime contractor, and we often connect subcontractors with major primes as well. So, so thank you for coming and presenting, and it sounds like you've got it together now. Since two thousand and five funding started, you've got both sides of the house. We look forward to, you're doing great things now. Well, we appreciate it.
Now that you live in the junior college system.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Now, six point three, Mr. Ward, come on down. Happy to hear from you. Happy New Year to you too, sir.
All right. Good evening. Good to see everyone, especially the new commissioners. My name is Chris Ward. I'm Director of Business Development at Focus Broadband. We're in Brunswick County. That's where we're based. I want to thank, uh, Chair Lady, Chairwoman, Commissioner Newton for having me back, and especially County Manager Andrews and Assistant Manager Van. We've been in discussions a lot lately about some things that are going on in the county, and we thought it was a great time to introduce the new commissioners to what we've been working on the last three or four years. So, give you a little bit of information about us as a cooperative. We're an over sixty-eight-year-old company. We're the largest cooperative in the state of North Carolina when it comes to communications. We've been offering high-speed internet, telephone service, business services, security, those type of things, mainly in Brunswick County for the last sixty-eight years. Back in two thousand and twenty-two, we rebranded from ATMC. We're still Atlantic Telephone Membership Corporation, but we did a branding name change to Focus Broadband to let people know the future is broadband, and that's what we're focusing on, and I'm sorry that this thing's going crazy.
It's been crazy all day.
I'm probably loud enough without it, but I'll continue. So we have currently about sixty thousand customers throughout Brunswick, Columbus, Robinson, Duplin, and Pender Counties. So let's go back to December two thousand and nineteen. We had a meeting with, at that time, the management of, uh, Pender County, as well as Commissioner Newton. I believe you were involved. We talked about the big problem that we had in Pender County with high-speed internet. Now, twenty nineteen, December was before COVID. It's before the government told everybody to go home and do the best they can working in school without high-speed internet. So we were working on this problem before COVID, and it just so happens when we applied for a reconnect grant that spring of two thousand and twenty, we were right in the middle of the pandemic. Well, uh, fast forward a little bit. It was actually December eleventh, two thousand and twenty. The United States Department of Agriculture Secretary Sonny Perdue came down to Pender County to announce at that time, which is one of the largest and still one of the largest broadband grants ever in the reconnect program. There's twenty-one point six million dollars that we were able to secure through the federal government to go along with seven point two million dollars of our own funding for that twenty-eight point eight million dollar project that we're currently working on, and that will serve over seven thousand homes and businesses when it's completed. Couple of highlights. We've already have service available in Cane Tuck, and we've got multiple phases throughout Caswell that will have service available soon, and in Holly Shelter.
Looking at the map, hopefully you guys can hear me. I call this the lungs of Pender County. You got I forty in the middle, and you got seventeen on the coast. Both sides of Pender County are the reconnect, and we'll talk about the state's great grant, the orange in the middle. And you can see the areas that we're working in and the areas where service is available. So we have crews in eastern Pender County and western Pender County currently working together throughout the county.
And let me clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
This twenty-eight point eight million dollar grant, uh, funded by ATMC and the government.
Twenty-one point six million from the government and seven point two from us.
Was to serve, provide service to underserved.
Underserved and not served at the time, yes, ma'am. And those are all stipulations set forth in the grant. At that time, I believe they said underserved was ten by one, and now they say twenty-five by three when it comes to megabytes. So going forward into two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, the North Carolina, uh, legislator appropriated seven hundred and fifty million dollars of COVID funding for, uh, broadband internet access grants throughout the great grant and the CABS program in North Carolina. We applied for another grant for Pender County, and we were awarded that back in September of last year. We got the maximum amount, four million dollars for that. The county at that time is matching funds with us. We're both contributing over five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for that project. So that'll be a total of five point one million dollars and twelve hundred additional homes and businesses. So everybody knows altogether, that's over eight thousand two hundred homes and businesses and over forty million dollars in investment that Pender County basically has one point four percent interest in. Out of every dollar we spend, one point four cent comes from the county because of that match with the great grant. So I think that's a great term, uh, return on investment when you're looking at the amount of funding that's coming into Pender County. Give you guys some ideas about challenges now, sitting in front of you, especially the folks that I've met with before. Three years, four years seems like a long time, but when you deal with the federal government, you deal with the state government, that's usually what it takes to get things going. But when you throw in a worldwide pandemic, there's a lot of problems. Material delays, labor shortages, all the things that we have to do to get through, to get to where we are today. Just so everybody knows, there's more than a year wait on most every product we order. If I order fiber optic lines today, it's gonna be at least a year, year and a half before I get them. Thankfully, we're a lot bigger company than most companies that are doing this type of work, so we have a large warehouse and a large storage area. So we're able to work, as you can see, across multiple areas across Pender County. And some great information for the residents of Pender County. We're currently building a store, a location across from Fort County EMC, coming into Bergall. We expect to have that store. I have a, uh, actually a grand opening sometime this summer, use, hopefully July first of August. We're recruiting right now for engineers, warehouse, customer care positions, and, um, technicians, computer technicians, and install technicians right now in Pender County. So we're trying to hire folks from Pender County that will be based out of our office in Pender County that will be open later this summer. So do you guys have any questions? That's kind of a fifty-thousand-foot overview of what we've been able to accomplish. Over forty million dollars, over eighty-two hundred addresses, and multiple projects with the great grant and the federal re- uh, re-grant, reconnect fund. So we've been able to actually capitalize on state and federal grants with the help of the county. Um, I don't know how many people here understand it. It takes a lot of work from commissioners, a lot of work from the county management, a lot of work from GIS that the folks were able to help us with.
Oh, mighty grateful to ATMC and Focus Broadband, and we appreciate all you've done today. But for the benefit of our people who's watching now.
Yes, ma'am.
And for the homeowners who are interested in hooking up to the services, will you please just do a very summary of, of how they can, who they contact and how they get on board?
The easiest way, Commissioner, is to get on your phone, if you don't have internet at your house, and go to Get Focus Broadband, getfocusbroadband.com. You fill out your information there, and it automatically comes to us, and we let you know there's updates on Pender County. You select Pender County drop-down. You'll see this map where you put your address in. It'll tell you when services come and what we're doing in the area, construction-wise and those things. And there's an eight-hundred number there. You can always pick up the phone and call us. But if you go to the website and leave us your information, and look at the, uh, map and put your address in, it pretty much tells you where we're at and what we're doing. It keeps it updated constantly.
And for those of you who do not have internet access, computers are available to you at the library. So how do our good citizens apply for your jobs at Focus Broadband?
Yes, ma'am. Go to our website, focusbroadband.com, and hit the careers link, and it actually goes through Paylocity where you do everything online.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Any questions?
I do have one question. How long is it gonna take for you to have this service implemented countywide?
I'll give you an idea. The reconnect program gives you a five-year time window because it's a lot larger grant. The state gives you a two-year window because obviously it's five point one, meaning it's a little bit smaller. So the reconnect, we've got three and a half years left on that. Doesn't mean that we're... three and a half years left on that. Doesn't mean that we're gonna take all that time. And the state grant, the timetable has not started because they hadn't actually funded that yet. So, three and a half to, uh, four years before we hopefully have everything. Now, that's in current market conditions. If market changes and supply and demand changes a little bit, and inflation and all those things change, then obviously we expect to go a lot faster. The issue we have is the state of North Carolina had almost a billion dollars from COVID funds for internet. Every state in the union has hundreds of millions, billions of dollars, and the federal government's getting ready to give away another sixty-four billion for this. There's not enough people willing to work and able to do these type jobs. So, this is happening in every state of the union with internet issues. Thankfully, Pender County was ahead of the curve and already had their grants awarded and was in great position when the state grants came. But three and a half to four years is the timetable that's actually left on those grants.
You know, I'm, I'm really amazed at the number of residents that have county-wide access to high-speed internet access.
Yeah.
Even east to west, because when you're in the west, you think about those areas in Commissioner Newton's district, the Chair Newton's district. But I've been talking with folks on the Allen, there are several people who looking for this service as well.
You know, COVID did not cause the problem. It just put a spotlight on it, but especially out west, and I know Commissioner Newton's been a big proponent of her constituents. A lot of those folks are still using technology from the eighties, and it never would have been upgraded. And now, uh, companies like us, we serve other areas, we take advantage of this. But the companies that serve those areas now could have easily applied for these funds and won just as much as we did if they would have done that. That's the difference. We're looking to serve those rural areas, uh, when some other companies are obviously doing it for profit, and we're not as a cooperative.
How your fees gonna compare with charter cable, sort of here? How your fees, monthly fees, does it go compare, maybe believe, with charter?
Across the board, our internet is faster and a lot less expensive than charter or spectrum, depending on where you're at.
Yeah.
And cable TV is something we're all getting out of, so we don't talk about cable prices 'cause that goes up every year.
I know.
I'm gonna leave the map here for you commissioners to look at. If you have any questions, everyone here should know how to get up there.
And we do, and thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
So grateful, too.
Thank you.
All right. So, Ms. Proctor, proclamation year of the trail.
Thank you, Chairman.
You've been working on this project for a long, long time, huh?
Yes, and two thousand and twenty-three is the year of the trail, and Pender County is prepared to join other counties and municipalities in proclaiming the year of the trail. Pender County is unique in our state because we've got the Mountains of Sea Trail, the East Coast Greenway, the North Carolina Birding Trail, the Oyster Trail. We've got so many trails that come through Pender County. So, we are gonna do something different. We are gonna spotlight these different trails and our communities throughout the year. And by doing that, we are going to pick one family fun hike that's a mile or less per month that's going to go around our county. The first one will be at Abbey Nature Preserve, and the Parks and Rec Department put that one together. Next month, it's Heart Healthy Month. So, our health department put together a Heart Healthy Month, which will start at the Senior Center in Burgaw. So, every one of our hikes will spotlight our county. In March, we're gonna be in Topsail Beach, and we're gonna do the top-secret hike. It's where you learn about Operation Bumblebee. Um, we're gonna do one in September in Penderly, and Eleanor Roosevelt is leading that hike. So, we are gonna have a ball. So, just keep watching. We've got our press releases out. Uh, we put the press release out, and within hours, we were getting phone calls for people wanting to take the family fun hikes. So, um, what I'm doing today is just putting this proclamation before you. It should be in your packet, and, uh, we appreciate the support.
Appreciate your good work. Any comments, questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Ms. Proctor. All right. Uh, Mr. Attorney, did we have any sign-up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we have ten.
Okay.
So, I am going to keep coming, one, two, or three minutes.
Uh, three.
Uh, Gary Helm.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I have these packed. I'm here today on behalf of some residents and, uh, landowners, property owners in the Carl Meeks, Rocky Point area. Um, there is currently a motocross track operating there without a special use permit.
I'm sorry, say that again.
And there's a motocross track that is operating without a special use permit.
Okay.
And they're operating seven days a week. Uh, there's residents across the road, all around. I have thirty names of petition, petition in the county to enforce their ordinance against this. Um, I have myself and another fellow have contacted the county, uh, ordinance enforcement department, and they have not, uh, done anything about it so far. And they've been contacted so many times. And I would just like to play for you something that we listen to every day. If you'll, if you bear with me one second. Where's my phone? This is what we adhere every day.
Where was that taken?
Shoot, when was that taken?
Where, where was it taken?
From the corner of my property, my farm on Carl Meeks Road. But it's the same wherever you go. I mean, though, all the properties around us, everybody is just upset. We can't enjoy, we can't sit outside in the evenings. On the weekends, they do on Sundays. Uh, they currently, they just got through with a two-week training camp, uh, where they ran seven days a week, and, you know, eight, ten motorcycles out there running all day long. Um, you know, there's people, there's one neighbor sold their home because they can't stand it anymore. Um, and we've just, we've had enough of it. I mean, there's, like I said, there's thirty names on here, and the list was growing, and people calling, wanted to sign up every day, but I couldn't get it to them in time. So, I just want to make you all aware of it, and hopefully County Manager can talk to his code enforcement guy and get him to do something about it. So far, they haven't done anything.
How many times have you contacted Sonnen?
I talked to him personally once, but I know another, he's not here yet, another resident has, uh, contacted him several times. And last Monday, he promised to take care of it or call me. He was gonna call me back. Uh, we haven't heard anything. So, I'm, we're at our wit's end, so.
We'll be glad to take a look at it.
But it's unclear, and if you look in the packet, they created an LLC, and it clearly states an event site, and they have no special use permit.
Okay.
And, and in the packet also is reviews from people that rented the property to ru- to ride on motocross. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Jonathan Vaughn.
Hey, good evening. Jonathan Vaughn, Rocky Point.
Vaughn or Vaughn?
Vaughn, like Stevie Ray Vaughn.
Okay, gotcha.
I hear the chatter, yeah.
You got me.
Um, at the last commissioner's meeting on January third, there was a few line items brought up for King's Estate Real Estate Auction.
Yes, sir.
Uh, within this real estate auction, um, a few of the lots were passed, and a few of the lots were failed for approval. Um, I, I don't really see the, the understanding, the justification on, uh, the approval process. Uh, i- if there was a minimum that should have been set for that, it should have been before the, the auction process, because I had to pay for the land at that time, and then after it failed, it took two weeks to get the money back. Um, another thing is, I was only approved.
Were you the purchaser? Were you the bidder?
Yes.
Okay. Did you talk to anyone?
I, I've talked to Andy Dvain a couple of times.
Then you got, then you were told good information.
Yeah, yeah, Andy, Andy's been great. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And professional.
Yes, fair.
Um, but yeah, I, I won three lots. Two of them were denied, one of them was passed. And, you know, we're, we're talking about rural wooded wetlands. A half-acre lot may not perk, and certainly will not be able to build and have a septic system. So, what is the process?
So, I'm sure that you were advised as to what the, what the problem was, and that you'll have another opportunity.
Okay. All right. The only thing I was asking is, what would be fair, is looking at the average of all the ones that were passed, and seeing if I could submit approval at that average. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, sir.
Sheriff Allen Dopp.
I think you should.
Three minutes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. I just want to take a quick minute to announce the forming of, uh, of a Sheriff's Charity Foundation here in Pender County, and I wanted to introduce a great lady who has worked so hard at putting this together, and that's Ms. Cynthia Tartt. And I'd like for her to just take a quick minute as well to, um, to tell you a little bit about it, and I think she's gonna introduce, uh, some of the board members that have, have formed as well, so.
I thought he would do it all for me, so I wouldn't have to say very much, but, but, um, uh, we moved to Pender County two years ago, and we love it here. We've retired here, and we wanted to, to give back. We wanted to do goodwill, but we weren't sure where. And through COVID, you know, it was really hard to find out where your place would be. And my husband and I attended the Citizen Academy, the first one that was sponsored through the Sheriff's Department. And, um, Jerry, I think you were the one that came to my house and gave me the application. But we participated, and at that time, we saw the great need of, of the services and the great need of, of volunteers and support for the Sheriff's Office. And we were hooked, you know, because we knew the possibilities. We live in a great county. We have great people. We have people that wanna help, they just don't know how. They need a, they need a venue to do it with. And so, when the timing was right, I, I did a lot of research. I've researched the counties in North Carolina that have a Sheriff's Charitable Foundation. I've, uh, talked to people in Greensboro, Charlotte Mecklenburg, Palm Beach, Florida, Brunswick County, a lot of places to look at their, their track record, their best practices, and what works, and tried to model that for our county in Pender. And so, um, our, our first board meeting is at twenty-six next week, so I can't say very much about, a lot of details about what we're doing as far as specific programs, because the board hasn't voted on them yet, and actually hasn't, has not had this information. But I will say a draft of our mission is the Pender County Sheriff's Charitable Foundation is dedicated to serve the people of Pender County by building permanent charitable capital to support programs and provide services that enhance the quality of life for all its citizens. Areas of support include community safety, school safety, technology and innovative programs, and volunteer support. Also, support from the faith communities. We have a pastor on our board who will be working with other pastors across the county to look at what we can do in the jails and other places to provide support. And also, support to the employees, goodwill, just goodwill to the employees, recognition. Um, you know, just, just being the good people we are, giving back to the good people that are serving us. So, we do have some board members that are here tonight, and as a courtesy, I wanted to make sure we came to y'all and talked with you about it before we had our first board meeting, and I'd like for them to introduce themselves, if they will, if they'll come up. All of them cannot be here tonight. We have, um, we have a pastor, we have attorneys, we have financial managers. We tried to get all the professions on the board that we needed to make sure this was a strong foundation for the building of it for Pender County, so.
Hey, guys. Most of you know me. I'm Rep. Pollak. I've worked with many of you. I've known Ms. Cynthia for fifteen years, probably, and Danny, raise your hand, Danny. She keeps him straight, too, but I'm, they're really good people, and so I appreciate the opportunity. I've done Sheriff Cutler for many years, Power Patrol and beyond, so I'm looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi there. Uh, I'm Sana Holman. I'm a local business owner here, relocated, husband's military, um, and had been looking for a place to kind of plug in and give back. We have a dear friend who is, um, part of the Sheriff's Department, and so he holds a special place for us, so it felt fitting.
My name's Kieran Jaswell. We live here in Hampstead, and we have just become, our youngest child just went off to college. So, um, we were looking at opportunities to help out the community, and this seemed like a tremendous opportunity.
Hello there. I'm Cindy Caldwell, and I've been living here in, um, Pender County, me and my husband, for about twenty years, and, um, law enforcement's just in our blood and in our lives for many, many years. So, it just seemed like a good, good place to, um, give back. Thank you.
Jeff Caldwell, ditto. Twenty-year, uh, resident of Pender County, uh, formerly of Hampstead, now Rocky Point within the last week. Uh, we, uh, appreciate the opportunity to serve on this board, and we look forward to it very much. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Who's that?
Who's this? Good afternoon. I hope you're familiar with me, but again, my name is Chester Ward. I'm one of the sergeants at the Pender County Sheriff's Office. My assignment there is public relations. Also, we have another, um, member that's from the Sheriff's Office, Ms. Jenny Coleman, which is the administration assistant. She's, that's not able to be here this evening, had other engagements, but she's wonderful, too. Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming, and we look forward to hearing some good things for our folks that serve our communities. We can't do enough for them. Any questions, comments?
You're all good people, I know all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a good board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Winifred Meiser. Hi, I'm Winifred Meiser. I live in Hampstead, and I just wanted to say that, uh, we've lived here about five years now, and during that time, um, we, we live in a place, it's called Belvedere Plantation, and the road that goes through the main area of where you enter that, that, that particular site is not been painted with the yellow stripe in the, in the five years that we've been there, and, and I think for a lot longer before that. And at the last homeowners' meeting, I asked if they would see it, because I know that sometimes when you're driving on that road at night, it's, they're, they're not, you know, narrow, but they're narrow enough that you wanna know where that middle yellow line is. And I feel like it's an unnecessary hazard, but we were told that it's up to, it's, uh, not, it's not property of the, of the, the homeowners association's duties. It's part of the county. So, I'd like to know who and when they think is the people to go to, to get that done. It's quite a long street.
Have you spoken with anyone in our planning department?
I, I haven't spoken to anybody till I bring this up to you. I asked about it at the homeowners' association, and they said they would look into it, but I haven't seen anything get done, and it's a volunteer homeowners' association. They do a lot.
So, um, I, I didn't hear a whole lot of what you had to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can, is this, is this better?
Yeah, but you see that young man, Mr. Adams, back there that spoke earlier?
Yeah.
Ask him about it. He might be able to help you, or at least he'll, he'll tell you who to talk to.
I just consider it a safety.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Richard Catley.
Good evening. My name is Richard Catley. I've lived here for twenty-seven years. I have a comment about the new animal control ordinance, and I also have a little insight into it.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Bring the mic up higher, please.
There you go.
On February tenth of next year would be my wife and I's fifty-third. On February tenth of next year would be my wife and I's fifty-third wedding anniversary. However, we won't make that, because my wife was killed by dogs in December. She was killed by dogs because she liked to take walks around our neighborhood. And about half a mile away from our house was a house that had two dogs chained up between their driveway and their front door. My wife was a frequent visitor to the people who live at that house. For some reason, on the eighth, the dogs attacked her. She was alive when EMS got to her. She got to the hospital, she never regained consciousness. And, we had to prepare her for hospice on the eleventh, but she never made it out of the ICU. In most of this state, animal control does not allow dogs to be staked out. There's a good reason for it. When you stake a dog out and attach it in such a way-
Are you saying stake it out?
Attach it with a chain.
Chained up.
Chained up, tied up.
I'm sorry, I just didn't understand your word.
Whatever process you use. Instead of putting it in a pen, the dog has a feeling of vulnerability. It feels it can no longer protect itself, it's, if it's attacked. And it's one of the first thing, things that people do who want to make a dog vicious, is chain it up, it feels vulnerable, and it makes it easier to make the dog vicious. This is a problem throughout the South with pit bulls. These dogs were apparently not pit bulls. But our ordinance allows chaining up. Ordinances in most of North Carolina do not allow it. Ordinances in most of the world, the civilized world, do not allow you to chain up dogs. In very many countries, including the United States, you'll get charged with animal cruelty for doing so. Why they attacked my wife, when they did, I do not know. My wife had visited that house somewhere between twenty and thirty times. She knew the people well, I do not know the people. I'm sorry? I cannot hear you, I'm sorry. Okay, well, that's essentially, but that's my wife's life. It cost her, her life. And a lot of people who live in our area and Ferviden Holiday Drive are having a lot of problems with loose dogs attacking their pets and attacking them. It needs to change. If it's not changed in the animal ordinance, then that's a big, big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Susan Mitchell, I live on Aspen Road. The law says that dog owners need to have their dogs vaccinated against rabies. It should also say that they need to monitor dogs that are staked, or tethered, or tied up, or whatever you want to call it. And, give them food and water, make sure they're not a nuisance. This will help animal control when they go out to investigate complaints that are received. I'm a veterinarian, um, and I have seen the health benefits that come to our senior citizens especially, from having a companion animal. I've also done some work with bomb sniffing dogs. They work with our military to help keep us safe and to protect us. Um, in fact, just kind of an aside, there's a dog from the Burgon Municipal Shelter that is being considered currently as a rescue animal to help sift through rubble in case there is ever another terror attack on our country. He was a throwaway dog. And, if it were your brother or sister, or your son or daughter that were buried under rubble, you would hope that that dog were given food and water in order to survive. Thank you, and I hope that you vote to support our companion animals.
Thank you, ma'am.
William Berry?
I'll take a spot.
Uh, Susan Berry?
I didn't get to sign up, so if it was in Hampstead, maybe a little comment, so.
I'll work through the list and then the board can decide.
Kathy Ellison?
Can I take, can I speak?
We're going to work through the signups, and then if we, yep.
Kathy Ellison?
Hello, I'm Kathy Ellison. I'm here tonight because of my concerns for the kids in our community. I have two grand boys in Pender County schools. First, I need to give, provide some background. During his campaign, Jimmy Tate promised no CRT in schools. He had no CRT on his signs. Many in the community knew about Mr. Tate having three EDI boards posted on his website. We attempted to educate the community on the connection between CRT and EDI. In case you aren't aware, EDI is, is not about equality, and it heavily promotes LGBTQT+. At the past school board meeting, Jimmy Tate approached the board requesting more diversity in our books in schools. I would like to ask Mr. Tate, exactly what books do you have in mind? I'd also like to ask, since he doesn't have children, should he be the one pushing books into our schools? Shouldn't that be reserved for the parents? And with all the problems our community is facing, why would adding books to our schools be such a concern to someone in a county commissioner's seat? Thank you.
Let me, let me, let me ask for clarity during that statement. You said that I approached the school board and asked for more diversity in books?
Yes. Do I have a witness to that?
I would like to see that tape. I went to the school board meeting and prayed, and that was, they invited me to say the prayer, and I sat back down. But as you all continue to do during the campaign, spreading up false information.
No, we did not spread any false information, I'm not spreading false information now.
Okay, alright, you, you've had your time to make your comment.
Well, he was asking.
He asked for clarification. You, you, have you signed up to speak?
No, but he answered.
Alright, then you're not allowed to speak. Are there any more signups?
Uh, Sheree Zorzi Freydo, I'm sure I put her back. She was here in connection with that, that matter of air property, that would be seven, so she may have, she may have left.
Okay.
Okay.
So. Those are all the signups for public comment?
I would like to speak, because she was-
I would like to put that, what?
I, I would like to speak, please.
On what issue?
On an issue concerning our county.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to allow this?
I make a motion that would allow her to speak.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor?
Thank you all for allowing me to approach the board and speak with you.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Beth Butler, I am a resident here in Hampstead, District Two. Sad to see Ms. Hardy's not here, um, tonight at the meeting, but, um, I'm a concerned citizen of the county, and I've got, um, I've got a lawsuit facing our county right here as a direct result of one of our commissioners, Mr. Tate. He's specifically named in this lawsuit for violating North Carolina law. I am asking for Mr. Tate's resignation, so we can possibly mitigate this lawsuit for taxpayers. Taxpayers should not be responsible for a lawsuit from a commissioner. And this lawsuit directly names Mr. Tate. Um, I'm also a concerned citizen, and, and other concerned citizens in the county, questioning Mr. Tate's residency, as we have been doing for the past year. Mr. Tate was renting a trailer during the election, in a trailer park in Surf City. That trailer park has since been sold and is set to be demolished. Several people in District One have expressed their concern to me about lack of representation in their district. Wanting to know, where does Mr. Tate live? Because no one in our district has seen or heard from him since the election. So, I'm asking you as a board for a direct investigation into Mr. Tate's residency for transparency for the public. I have one last concern that I wanted to, to speak about, and after going through some of the past meeting minutes of our county commissioner meetings, which I've been reviewing, our former commissioner of District One, David Williams, um, that appointed Mr. Tate, he moved out of Hampstead in March of twenty-twenty-two. I am concerned why he was still sitting on our board until July twenty-twenty-two and voting on issues in our county while he was living in Onslow County, because that is illegal. I thank you for your time, I look forward to getting direct results for citizens of our county and concerns answered in these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, will I respond?
I was over at Hampstead, I didn't have your license here.
I, I don't, I don't think now's the time. So, moving right along to the consent agenda.
Can I speak? I was over at Hampstead.
I think the time for public comment is over.
This, this is about pornography in our schools, just really quick and easy.
I'm, I'm-
Our children are subjected to pornography.
If my board wants to hear you.
Can I just?
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we hear her speak.
Second?
Three minutes.
Do I have a second? We don't have a second.
Pornography for our children, I have mom here, can I just hand it to you then?
There is no second, ma'am.
In our school and our public libraries, it's right here, it's all in here.
Without a second, I cannot add you, you did not sign up to speak, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, consent agenda. Consent agenda. Ma'am, that is enough.
This is our children, shame on you all, this is our children.
Consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do I have a second, sir?
I have a second.
All in favor? Alright, let's go to nine point one approvals and resolutions. Ms. Moser and Mr. Cutler, animal ordinance changes.
Yeah, I may need these other guys to speak for me, obviously, um, my raspy voice, but several years ago, prior to COVID, our Animal Shelter Committee worked with the Sheriff's Department. We had heard, um, requests from the public about concerns when it came to tethering of animals that, uh, went on for days, no access to food or water, or any kind of shelter. And then also making sure that shelter was adequate. That they couldn't be in a hot barrel during hot weather and, and cold, um, with no, no other comforts. And so, we proceeded to check around with other counties in our area. And, this, we felt was a really good start for our animal control ordinance. The way we look at this is that it, it's not intended as much to be punitive as it is to be educational. It's not that animal control has the time or the staff to go door to door and see how you, uh, take care of your pets. The intent is that it will be complaint-driven, and that this will give an opportunity for animal control officers to go out to educate the animal owner about, um, animal welfare, our, our rules on tethering and shelter. And, um, I really think to work with the resident in ways that we can make these animals a little bit more comfortable, whether they're outside chained up or needing some kind of shelter. Yeah, yeah. So, I don't know if the sheriff wants to, to comment any further or not, but that is the proposal for our animal control ordinance at this time.
At the risk of straining your voice further, can you give us for the benefit of the public a gist of the changes and the, and the, uh, requirements for, um, shelter, sheltering animals?
At the risk, I'll, I'll do my best. It was in, um, the agenda packet, and I think that a lot of individuals have had a chance to review it too. But, this, uh, when it comes to sheltering, this will not allow anyone to, to keep their dog in their car, under their car, inside any kind of a metal barrel, uh, especially in direct sunlight and during the summer. They can't keep them in cardboard boxes outside, or any kind of a, a transport crate, animal, I mean, airport crate, something like that. And then, um, the tethering is more with the intent to avoid animals from becoming, uh, all twisted, that they would have adequate, um, lead, and that they would have access to food and water, and that, um, the, help me Keith on this one, but as far as the weight of the animal, the weight of the tether can only be ten percent of the dog's weight, so they aren't buckled down with any kind of heavy clips and restraints like that, so.
So, basically, if I may, to summarize, it, they're to have, um, mobility-
Yes.
-in their movements.
Yes.
They're not at risk for tanglements, and they, if they are confined, they have to be properly sheltered with a roof and, and three sides.
And a floor.
Um, and they should be tethered in such a manner that would bring them no closer than three feet of another animal, and no closer than ten feet of a property lot.
And also, having access to food and water and shade during summer, or some kind of, of, uh, shelter in bad weather.
I'm going to comment, uh, I'm on the Animal Shelter Committee, and this is a long time coming, we've been trying to get this done. I still have a real problem with dogs that are tied up, I hope eventually we can get rid of that. I can see what dog, does to dogs, but I think I was talking long ago. It makes a dog angry, and, um, they, they get vicious after a while, they cannot get away. Dogs are meant, they're social animals, they want to be with people. I live, I have a lab, and I, he stays with me all the time. And, uh, my daughter said, you shouldn't keep them in the house, oh, yeah, well, it's cold, he's coming out of the house. The animal shelter, I think they're doing a good job on that, getting all that stuff together. And I think it's really important that we protect our animals in the county. I think a lot of these things are called a counter brunt of county, what they have in place. I think it's really a good program, and it's going in the right direction.
Rome wasn't built in a day, but I do want to take the time to congratulate the progress that has been shown out at the shelter, the outdoor kennels have been enclosed in a metal building. Um, I would like for the board to be, uh, aware of this, and to take an opportunity to go out and look at the good work that's been done, um, because I'd like to see it completed with the ends on those buildings, um, for the outside animals who are pinned in the outdoor. Here's the large animal pins, but, but good work on this, and for progressing and trying to bring us out. I have five dogs, and, um, four of them were rescued from Pender County Animal Shelter. You, you can't do- You can't do something for every dog or cat, which I have adopted also, but you do what you can. And you hope that everyone else does their share as well.
You're doing a good job, Julie.
But that program is in good hands and run by capable people, and I'm very proud of the work y'all do. So any more comments?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to thank Mrs. Moser and Sheriff Cutler and Lieutenant Ramsey for all the hard work. I know there was a lot of work going into this, and I do foresee in the future we going further than this, in the near future. So I want to thank you.
I want to say that I remember when Ms. Moser took over leadership with that and you too, Lieutenant Ramsey, and it's great to hear the progress we hear about our own animal shelter today. I'm really glad to see what we're moving forward with this, hoping to know my package of the weekend. I think it's gonna protect me.
Believe it or not, when I first got on, the county commissioner, the biggest thing we have with the Animal Shelter, what was going on, people were stealing animal, some of the dog food, and people bringing up stuff in, the volunteers were not. Found out they were not doing what it's supposed to be doing, so it's remarkable what we could come through in the last couple years with Animal Shelter.
So do I have a... Would you like to speak, Chair?
I think she could.
Ms. Ranty? All right, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. Set in order.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Van, renewal of lease for 102 West Fremont.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Fellow commissioners, just want to ask for your consideration for the renewal of the lease where a great deal of the clerk of court's records are stored on 102 West Fremont Street. We did have an option to renew for another year within the lease that just is about to expire, and I can assure you, been working closely with Mr. Andrews, and we've been trying to determine other options for when this lease expires next, which would be January of next year.
Was this a budget item? Was this budgeted?
It was budgeted, yes, ma'am.
Any comments, questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for me. No, thank you.
All in favor? Passes. Thank you, Mr. Van.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Moser, you're back up. Resolution to request approval to issue purchase order for Cape Fear Engineering to conduct USDA environmental assessment, and this is with regards the new health department building project.
As part of applying for USDA funding, we need to have an environmental assessment and geotechnical assessment. So we issued a request for qualifications, which means that we look at the company's ability to conduct these two assessments, not at what they would charge. But we had four bids, and we have a couple that were on each end of the spectrum, and we, as a committee, decided that we would recommend Cape Fear Engineering to complete this prior to us being able to complete the paperwork for USDA funding.
So they were the highest bid, is that correct?
No. The other bidder, it really was too difficult to try and figure out what their cost would be, because every piece was itemized. And then what would happen is that if one thing needed to... If they needed to go deeper, if they needed to do more borings, you know, they would tack on additional cost. And so we could never decide or figure out exactly what their overall cost was gonna be.
Well, what about the RFQ? What did it state? What were the requirements for the engineering environmental assessment? Were they spelled out in the RFQ?
Yes, they were. They were. And like I said, it was a request for qualifications. They did not have to provide what their cost was gonna be. They... This other company provided just a cost sheet.
So what were the range of the bids that you obtained for this study?
I don't have that exactly in front of me, but anywhere from 20...
This was a carryover item, and we carried it over for just this specific purpose.
26... Somewhere around 26,000 up to 78,000.
So this is a little bit more than will the land per, right?
Oh, definitely, because this...
So over 50% of the cost of this building is being reimbursed by the state. Is that correct?
Yes, in fact, the health department's already set aside $5 million for items just as this.
So will the state share in the expense associated with this study?
The portion of the DSS, we will submit for some reimbursement, which we're looking at 45% to 50% reimbursement on the DSS share. There are no county funds involved in this.
Okay, so no county funds?
No.
Well, that makes it an easy question. Any more questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Go ahead. We did have a bid from previous meeting around 25,000 or 26,000.
Yes. That was not going to be a complete... It was not including all of the geotechnical engineering that needed to be conducted with the very deep borings, to the point where we questioned, how could someone do that job at such a low price without coming back and requesting more funds?
These...
Thank you.
This study is required by the state and will be...
It's required by USDA, yes.
So state monies. All right.
I know... I'm familiar with Cape Fear Engineering. They have a good track record. They work for people. That's what I can tell me I work for. And so...
I think they've had experience working with these USDA applications, and will be able to complete the report that USDA will be looking for in our submission.
Wait, wait, wait. Can you hold up? What's going on out in the lobby? Does anybody know? Thank you, Ms. Proctor. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Moser. I'm sorry.
I was just saying that the USDA, I mean Cape Fear Engineering has completed projects like this for those that are looking for USDA funding, so they know exactly the type of report and the items to be included that USDA would be looking for.
Any more comments?
I don't. It's no local dollars, and it's got a good project, and I'll be good. Make a motion.
And we have to get this done so that we can move on to the design phase and get it shovel wrapped.
And application with the USDA.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, Madam Chair. Check it out.
Good evening. My name is James Proctor. I'm the utility deputy director, Madam Chair and Board. Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm here to present to you item 9.4. This was voted on in October of 2002 to appropriate funds for 1.53 million, which was the cost share for Pender County. This is for a 48-inch parallel line coming from Lower Cape Fear to us so that we have redundancy in a source water from Brunswick. Back in 2021, we had a main break, and it was, we only had one source of water, so that put us in jeopardy, and this will allow us to have a backup to that.
Prior to that, we had a break in this line that feeds us from Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer, when a portion of the pipe was exposed during the hurricane. Was it... Which one? Florence.
I'll be with Florence.
Florence, on Highway 421.
Yes, ma'am.
And the pipe was simply rerouted, and last year there was a break in that leg that comes around to our water plant on 421, because it had been laid improperly
Inproperly.
in the riverbed.
Yes, ma'am.
And broke. So this will provide a dual line. This portion is...
For the portion for us from the... It's the single 48-inch raw water pipe that runs from the location across the Cape Fear River to the Pender County Surface Water Plant.
To our plant.
And...
And it feeds both Cape Fear and Pender County.
Yes, ma'am.
New Hanover County and Pender County. And this was approved by our prior board, and this matter is just coming up for a final
For approval for the agreement.
It should have been considered back in December. I don't know what the delay was. Could you tell me?
I believe it was the... The delay was the verbiage in agreement from Lower Cape Fear to all of the counties that are involved in that.
So this funding will come from the utilities?
Yes, ma'am. It'll come from...
And there are fundings available?
Yes, ma'am.
Funds available and had been set aside a near mark for this project?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is just simply the final approval?
This is just approval to... For the board to approve, to sign the draft document, the final document for the construction and for the board members who weren't on the board in October. The total cost of the project is 11.7 million dollars. That's being... It's 11.7 million dollars, and it's... I'm at a loss now. It's divided up among the percentage of water used. CFPUA is paying 9.67 million. Pender is paying 1.52, 3 million, and then the 421 Industries are paying 509,000. And there was also a 23.5 million grant that was received by Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer to assist with this. So at this time, asking for...
That is my understanding as a board member of Lower Cape Fear Water.
I know. Yes, ma'am. And asking for approval of the interlocal agreement.
Any questions? Have any?
Madam Chair, just for the board's information, lawyers for all sides involved in handling the situation.
Thank you for making that point. I knew that, but they didn't know that, so thank you. This agreement's been fully vetted.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. So the paper, the town up in Lake County, you want to take some of the water out of the Cape Fear River? It was gonna affect us, huh?
Yes, sir. I believe that's one of the items we have later tonight.
It's like one of our... It's like one of our board members on Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewers, that river water, we're the last one to stick our straw in it.
To base...
It's getting divvied up mighty quick.
And basically, where the point is there is a county above us wants to take water out of the Cape Fear River, and they can petition to do that. The problem is, they want to take that water and discharge it into the Noose River.
Their wastewater into another tributary.
Right. So that removes 6 million gallons of water out of the Cape Fear.
Potable water.
And in doing that, that would... We would all... That withdraw water out of the Cape Fear River would have to remove... We would lose some of our actual drinking water percentage-wise in what we withdraw. But we'll talk about that later tonight.
They're not gonna be allowed to do that.
Well, they're trying.
They're trying.
They're trying.
Thank you.
We don't like it. But that's like in the big city in the future. Water is a great commodity. It's like land. They don't make us so much of it. All right, so now we have Mr. Andrews, 11.1. There's item 10, discussion, then appointments. Am I missing something in here? No discussion. All right, so appointments, 11.1. Two applicants for appointment to voluntary agricultural district board. Jared Johnson, Gina Morasco has served two terms.
Refer this to Nancy. Have any questions?
There are two. One vacancy...
Can you pull that mic down to...
There is one vacancy from a member whose term expired last year and did not sign up to serve again. We received only one application, and that was from Jared Johnson. It would be his first time serving on the board. So we're requesting consideration of appointing him to the voluntary agricultural district board.
Okay, so this will be in my district? He lives in my district?
Mr....
Yeah, he's a... James. 53 Alphabord, Pat, Pender.
All right, so I would recommend Mr. Johnson for this position. So I make a motion that he be... If I could, make a motion, but Mr. McCoy, will you make the motion for me?
Okay, I will. I only got one position.
Yes, sir.
All right, I will. Okay, I'll make a motion.
There are two vacancies, but for this one, the other one is a renewal or requesting
a renewal of an existing term.
And where does she live? We are asking for a vote to renew Gina Morasco and to appoint Mr. Jared Johnson?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, both of them, all right.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion and approve both of them.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you. Passes. Now, Mr. Andrews or Madam Clerk?
Planning Board, and you have a memo in your packet from interim planning director, Justin, that there are four members whose terms are expiring on the board. Delva Jordan, Damian Buchanan, Jeffrey Pitts, and Jeff Bowdoin.
All who have served admirably on this board, and I would recommend them if I could make a motion, but are there any comments, questions, concerns?
I know several of these folks, and I know they plan a lot of time.
Yes, they do.
I'd be glad to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All in favor? Thank you. Passes. 11.3, reappointment of two members of Board of Adjustment, Jeffrey Snyder and Max Kipfer.
Correct. And this is a similar situation. Mr. Kipfer was appointed in January of 2021 and has served one term. He's District One, and he's interested in serving another term. And Jeffrey Snyder is an alternate, also appointed in 2021 and has served one term, and he wants to serve another term as an alternate. So they're both renewals.
All right, so Mr. Kipner is from Topsail Beach. It's not really clear. Anderson Boulevard, whose district? Would that be yours?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Tate? All right. So do we have any questions or comments? We got a two for again, so do I have a motion?
I'd be glad to make a motion to reappoint.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Excuse me, before we go to the next thing, thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here. It's always exciting when we come to Hampstead.
I would like to make one to thank you as well, Steve. And the fact you were here, I came early because we was on a road trip. That was a really, really fun. And then we found out that I was not today, but we were here early, but feeling a little after 2:30. But then we were advised, looking at the paperwork, and it said that the address of this meeting is at 805 Rocker Street, Brooklyn. We were gonna go there.
Oh, my goodness.
For a young lady staff came work on the...
We are so sorry. Thank you for pointing that out. We'll be more diligent. Yes. Thank you. I'm so glad you were here, and thank you for pointing that out. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. But we got you some help, even if we didn't. All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good deal. Have a good evening. Drive careful. All right, where were we? Uh, eleven point four, appointment of Jerry Groves to serve on Board of Equalization. I think we have discussed this. Are there any comments or questions? Or do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, eleven point five, renewal of Tamara Savage's term on the Novant Health Pender Medical Center Board.
And Ms. Savage has also served two terms on the board. Her term expired in December of last year. She did submit an application a while back, but was not able to locate it. I have asked that she resubmit.
Okay, I, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm not seeing an application in her packet.
That's what I'm saying. I couldn't, I couldn't-
We're gonna, can we pull this and reconsider it next time? Because I think, uh, last fall, we had discussed this issue that we would like to have a full application, even for renewals. And, and we've already approved several that did not have an application. So, what would the board like to do with that? Because there were several other boards that we had, um, an application that we approved a renewal without the application.
I, I agree with you.
And I didn't catch it, and I apologize.
I think we should be consistent following that.
I, I think so too. I think, I think we should bring the other boards that we had just approved, who were up for renewal, who didn't have an application. Um, am I right in saying, uh, that we should have an application on file at, for the renewals as well? Isn't that what we decided?
The planning board's-
Not to overcomplicate the thing? Mr. Attorney?
Yes, ma'am. My thing is now that you can, that wasn't the board's policy and the reason was circumstances could change from-
And we wanted to make sure there were no conflicts. So, what should we do to correct the, um, record for the, um, approvals that we have just made that were bearing of an application? Can we do that by motion to rescind those approvals?
You can rescind those approvals as long as, again, as I recall, as unanimous, so as long as the person makes the motion voted in favor of the prior, prior appointment, then that can be done at this meeting, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so do I have a motion for consistency? To rescind the approvals for the, uh, prior boards? And I think that was specifically, um, for Gina Morasko. We didn't have an application.
You do have one in behind-
Oh, you do? Oh, she's got one. Okay, so it didn't concern her?
It wasn't in your packet, but I do have it.
Okay. Do we have applications for the other renewals?
Uh, the planning board, eleven point two, there are applications, I believe, in your packet.
Okay, good. Good, good, good. Cause I'm only seeing the one. As long as we have the applications-
And eleven point four, Board of Adjustment, we have applications for renewals.
So, we do have applications. Okay.
So, um, Ms. Savage is the only one. I'm sorry, Ms. Savage is the only one.
All right, let's take a quick look at these and make sure there aren't any, any conflicts that we can see. And I don't see that anything significant has changed that would require anything. So, I think we're good.
So, are we going to move, um, eleven point five to the February meeting or whenever I have an application?
Okay, that'd be great.
Is that what you, okay.
Is that okay with the rest of the board? All right, eleven point six, appointment for tourism development, um, from Tammy Proctor, Derek Cook.
And you did not have that application in your packet, but you do have it tonight behind this sheet. And I do apologize for the-
Next, oh.
It is attached to this. It's in your book.
So, we do have an application in the book?
Yeah. Yes.
Is this a new applicant, Ms. Proctor?
Are you familiar with the application?
I don't, I don't have a copy.
I didn't see the application this weekend and my-
No, I put this on your, on your desk. It's the, and I apologize. It's just been trying to get it all together. Do you have a memo that says request for board appointments? It should have Gina Morasko's and, um, Derek.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, are you familiar with the-
Yes, um, Ms. Cook has worked as a, um, tourism professional in the rental, um, aspect of the business uh, for the last more than seven years. And, um, she is our liaison now in Pender County for the largest rental agency. It's a Bacasa. And, uh, so I think she will be an excellent collector, um, on our board.
So, let, let me just make this comment. We are very appreciative of anyone who, who is generous enough to donate their time in support of, of any of our boards and activities. We just want to make sure that we're not overloading any one person or that we're creating a situation of conflict. But we certainly, in, in, in our comments tonight especially, do not want to leave anyone with the impression that we are not grateful uh, for people who, who, who are, are wanting to come forward and volunteer and help any, and, and give their efforts to anything going on in this county. So, thank you, all of y'all, who helped. So, do I have a motion for eleven point six, second?
Make a motion. Make a motion? Do you have a motion?
You have, he has a motion. Drive second. All in favor? Pass. So, very good. So, do we need to open as Maple Hill Water and Sewer Districts? Do we need to open at, as Rocky Point Water and Sewer District? Scotts Hill Water and Sewer District? Morse Creek Water and Sewer District? Central Pender? All right? Pender County Board of Health, Ms. Moser, do you have anything for us? Would you like to give us an update on flu, COVID? Any kind of pox?
I think you've been through it, haven't you?
I did want to mention that COVID has, um, resurged in our county. We had been, uh, at a very low level for communicability of, of COVID and most of our infections were related to flu. That has since changed. We have, uh, according to the CDC, we have moved to a medium risk for COVID. And, um, all of our surrounding counties, except for Sampson, are high risk for COVID. So, just a reminder for everybody to please stay home if they're sick, wash your hands. And, um, you know, just be cautious when you go out among groups of people or with family and friends. So, that's the main message for right now.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. You can make a better.
Social Services Board? All right, Mr. County Manager?
Nothing to report?
Assistant Manager?
I don't have anything, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Uh, important session, Madam Chair. Item three, attorney client. Item five, active property. And item six, person that, that covered.
Yes.
I, I did want to bring in off, uh, presentation.
All right. Commissioner Tate?
No, I've enjoyed my days as a commissioner and I thank you all for the opportunity and, um, I would like to say-
Some days more, more than others.
Oh, I enjoy it. It's, I went through a campaign so I can do this. It's great. It's your story. I do want to say congratulations to Teresa Batts, who was recently appointed, um, mayor at Surce City. And I saw several people who attended that ceremony. I'm sorry? Teresa Batts. Yes. So, congratulations to Mayor Batts.
Anything else, Commissioner Tate?
That's all, Mrs. Neale.
Okay. Commissioner McCoy?
I just want to say one more time, I'm proud of our animal shelter and what they're doing. And I think we went in the right direction and, uh, I appreciate all the employees that were there and, um, so it's really, I'm an animal lover, so I make sure I animal and we thank you all. And, uh, it's important how you treat your animals, how you treat other people. So, um, I appreciate everything they do with.
All right, so, Commissioner Groves?
I would like to thank Ms. Moser and Sheriff Cutler, who's not here, and Lieutenant Ramsey for that hard work on those changes, animal control. I thank you again.
All right, and I would like to thank staff for their hard work in moving several efforts forward. One of which is our, um, review and health needs assessment. Uh, we appreciate that, that momentum you got going there. Um, during this period since our last meeting, I've attended a, a COG, uh, Council of Government, um, where I now sit and as well as a Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer, um, meeting, uh, and meeting with constituents about other matters. Just a, a day in the life, I had a lady from Robeson County call me and she had a situation with her family cemetery in my district. Um, she couldn't get DOT to understand where it was so they could come out and fix the access road. Um, so I had planning involved. Then I had our GIS director involved. Long story short, within a matter of an hour and thirty minutes, we had our GIS assign an address to this land. Then we had given her information that actually her church owned the land and the easement so that she could talk to them about improving the road. Those are the kinds of things that, that we're able to do for citizens because we have good staff to back us up, who know what they're doing. Um, and I, I'm very proud of, of the folks that we have and the hard work that they do. So, thank you for supporting what we have to do on behalf of our citizens on a daily basis. And thank you for that library. I just love the library. All right, I think that, uh, I will entertain a motion, um, Commissioner Groves, for, if you would be so inclined to make a motion, that we go into closed session.
When I make a motion, we go into closed session.
For those items.
Oh, okay.
We have to enumerate them.
And I can read your writing?
Well, I can. Good luck.
I can't read.
All right.
You write too fancy.
Okay. Um-
He might be used to it.
Okay. I have, I have Adam three, five, and six, what we're talking about.
I have three, five, and six. That's right.
Yeah, I probably, okay. And we'll make a motion, go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor? We're now in closed session. Thank you all. We'll convene at-
The seven o'clock portion of our January seventeenth Board of County Commissioners We have five items on for public hearing, special use permits, zoning map amendments, and resolutions. It is my understanding that as to item twenty-one point five, there is some disagreement as to how the involved parties wish to proceed. It is the position of this board that it is not our place to involve ourselves with these types of estate decisions that once you determine how to proceed would be more appropriate for county involvement. So having said that, is there anyone here who would be opposed to having this matter continued until further resolution of the principal participants?
Okay. So hearing note-
I would like to have because I would like to speak for this-
It's my understanding that this is a family-
No, it's not about the family. May I speak? It's not about the family.
Well, we're not to that item yet. Right now, we're deciding whether or not it is ready to be heard. Okay? So our position is with regards to the request for special use, if the family members who jointly own the property are not of one accord as to how to proceed, that there is nothing that the county can do to assist that matter until the family members come together and decide what you want to do. Then we will hear the issue of the special use permit. Okay? But we are not here to-
We are not here to speak about family in care. We are to speak about this special use permit that was on the January twenty-first, twenty fourteen illegally denied.
Okay. Well, that is something that this board did not do and will require us to examine the special use permit. So I would at this time ask for a motion from my board, which to continue this item would require a unanimous vote.
First, may I say one thing? One more thing?
No, ma'am. Until and unless we hear this matter, you've signed up for public speaking, but if we don't address this matter, then-
And we have to swear three points in for that.
Yeah, so at this time, I'm asking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I do make a motion to table this for further conversation.
Do I hear- Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Chair, let me ask this question real quick. And I know, let me ask this, why, so we're tabling it so we can get more information brought to this point?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'll vote.
Okay. All in favor? This matter is tabled until there's some uniformity in the understanding of the principles involved in this special use permit request and revocation. Okay? Thank you.
But that means that we all have to take legal action against the board of-
Ma'am, you have not been recognized to speak.
I tried. Thank you.
Staff, I appreciate you bringing to our attention the conditions and the positions that have changed since this matter was initially put on the agenda. And it's not any fault of yours, and we appreciate your diligence in keeping us informed. Thank you. All right. So now proceeding to item twenty-one point one, zoning map amendment of two tracks in Long Creek from general business to RP residential performance.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, members of the board. Daniel Adams, Planning and Community Development Director. The first item on the agenda this evening is a general use rezoning application. Mr. E. Lloyd McIntyre is the applicant. He's here on behalf of Grand Oaks Development. Excuse me, and he is requesting the approval of a zoning map amendment to rezone two tracks in total roughly point nine seven acres from the GB General Business zoning district to the RP Residential Performance zoning district.
May I stop you right there?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we hear this about a year ago?
Mr. McIntyre has been involved in a couple of rezoning cases in the recent past, but not this, not these properties specifically.
Not this development?
Correct.
Okay.
And Mr. McIntyre is with us this evening.
Yeah, I thought it.
As you can see on the subject map, the two properties are located at the intersection of Pine Village Drive and NC Highway two-ten in Rocky Point. The two properties are surrounded by residentially zoned property. The larger tracks to the north and then further east and west are zoned RA. And then the tracks immediately east, west, and south are zoned RP or residential performance. As you can see on this aerial map here, the two subject properties are not currently built on. They're currently vacant lots, again, right there at the intersection of NC Highway two-ten and Pine Village Drive. Because this is a general use rezoning, there's no site-specific development plan associated with the application to request to rezone the property. So the board would need to consider that the site could be developed based on all the allowable uses within the RP zoning district if this request is approved. There are roughly seven residential uses allowed by right in the RP zoning district and one via special use permit. And there are roughly sixteen non-residential or commercial uses allowed by right in the RP zoning district and thirty-three via special use permit. On the right-hand side of the screen, you see some of the setbacks in this zoning district, thirty feet in the front, ten on the side, twenty-five in the rear. Again, no site-specific development plan associated with this request, so staff's not able to evaluate any impact to traffic. However, we were able to contact the Wilmington Metropolitan Planning Organization and get some information about volume and capacity data for this stretch of two-ten. That data is current as of 2020. So we've got a volume data of forty-six hundred. That's average annual daily traffic count and capacity at twenty thousand nine forty-three. So we're about twenty-two percent volume to capacity ratio there. As you can see on this future land use map, the subject property falls within the low-density residential future land use category. And this land use category is located on the fringe of medium-density residential uses and within existing single-family neighborhoods. These areas are typically established single-family neighborhoods with a low-density residential-
Mr. Adams-
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, are you saying that this requested use is consistent with the surrounding properties?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I needed to break up the drone a little bit. I was falling asleep.
I don't blame you. Excuse me for that. So yes, ma'am, as you said, proposed zoning district is found to be consistent with this future land use classification. Planning Board recommended approval of this general use rezoning, and staff also supports that recommendation.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody signed up for a public comment on this item?
The only sign-up, Madam Chair, is Mr. McIntyre. He is present before I ask questions.
Mr. McIntyre, come on down. We want to hear from you.
Hello?
Come on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm doing fairly well.
Still in the development business?
I didn't really intend to say anything, but if you have any questions, I'd certainly be glad to answer them for you.
You wouldn't hear last year, wouldn't you hear last year about the time last year, believe me?
Yes, sir. And here, at Hampstead. So is this the same development that you came before us for last year?
No, it's not.
How many developments you've got going on?
Well, just the one right now.
All right. All right. Do you have anything about this you want to say?
No. Excuse me. This I had at one time for a subdivision. As part, excuse me, I have the hiccups, part of a subdivision. But then I relocated my old office space from the Pine Village area to this particular lot and had it rezoned for my office complex.
Okay.
But there's too many years has gone since two thousand and seven to now that I'm not going to build an office complex now. So I want to rezone this back to residential.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions of this gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right. So any questions of planning or comments? Do I have a motion?
I do make a motion.
Motion to-
To accept.
All right. Motion approved. Do you have a second?
Second. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So all in favor? Motion carries. You're up.
Congratulations.
To twenty-one point two, special use permit request for commercial storage of boats and watercraft outdoors at the Topsail Township.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's good to see you all. Hope everyone's doing well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thurman.
And the people who signed up to speak on this, if you think you may rest to speak, you need to be sworn or confirmed. You need to stand where you are and disclose your sort of background. If someone's wearing a test on the decision to approve the whole truth, we'll help you out.
I do. Thank you.
Go, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thurman. All right. Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's good to see you all. Hope everyone's doing well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thurman.
And the people who signed up to speak on this, if you think you may rest to speak, you need to be sworn or confirmed. You need to stand where you are and disclose your sort of background. If someone's wearing a test on the decision to approve the whole truth, we'll help you out.
I do. Thank you.
Go, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thurman. All right. So our second item on this evening's agenda is our first of two special use permit requests. Robert Batson, applicant and owner, is seeking approval of a special use permit that would allow for the storage of boats and watercrafts outdoors. And this use is proposed to take place on three acres across an approximately forty-one point three acre tract within the GB General Business zoning district.
Why would a commercial storage require a special use permit from general business?
So actually, I'll go ahead and skip ahead a couple of slides, if you don't mind, to answer that. You'll wait, okay. I'll address that in just a minute. Yes, ma'am. Here on the screen, we're going to have the zoning map of that subject property. It's going to be outlined in green. Again, to reiterate, the proposed use is to- Again, to reiterate, the proposed use is to take place across three acres on this 41-acre tract of land. And I'll clarify that a little further as well. You know, some of the surrounding zoning in this area consists of primarily residential in the form of PD planned development just to the north of the subject property, the location of the Topsail Greens and Greenway Plantation communities. And directly across Sluke Point Loop Road is Hampstead's Kiwanis Park, just to orient the board on the location of this request. Here we have an aerial view of the property. This is 2020 aerial imagery. A little bit hard to make out on the screen here, but stretching across this entire property are a few accessory structures. And there is also an active, in-operation cell tower located on the northeast corner of this property. Here we have the applicant's proposed site plan as part of this special use permit request. Don't quite have a laser pointer, but at the bottom of this site plan would be Sluke Point Loop Road. And again, the area on which these spaces are outlined in would be the three-acre portion of this property. This proposed site plan does include approximately 100 spaces intended for boat and trailer storage. And stated within the applicant-submitted narrative that is included within the board's packet, this storage yard would supply electric, water, lighting, and security in the form of a combination lock to the entrance of this storage facility. And the site would have to be accessed using Sluke Point Loop Road, an access that would require submission to the Department of Transportation with the state for review and approval. And that review and approval takes place during the site development plan process with the Planning Department.
Do you have any idea how the proposed driveways to this boat storage facility line up with the entrances and exits from the Kiwanis Park across the street?
I do not. That is going to be examined by the Department of Transportation. Should this request be approved, of course, it'll move on to the site development plan process and go before the county's technical review committee. So the Department of Transportation sits on that committee, and they'll have to provide comments as well as require a driveway permit, which at that point, access would be analyzed with adjoining properties and their driveways onto Sluke Point Loop.
Is there any, is there sufficient space that that traffic flow could be rerouted if, in fact, it's found to be a problem or safety hazard for the Kiwanis Park?
And so just so I understand, the access off of Sluke Point Loop Road, not the internal movement within the storage facility itself? Ultimately, the access is going to be dictated by the Department of Transportation.
Okay. So that's not within our...
That's correct. So essentially, just because a driveway is shown in this location that's on the site plan in front of you, ultimately, that could not be the location of the driveway after NC DOT's review. So they could, they could require many things as part of a driveway permit. It really depends on their review criterias and the existing traffic volume on this segment of Sluke Point Loop Road.
This has come before us before, hasn't it?
Not this particular request.
Not this particular project?
No, ma'am. We've had, within the last year, I would say we've had two boat storage facilities proposed as a special use permit.
Thank you.
And just to give the board a little idea of the existing traffic volumes on this segment of Sluke Point Loop Road, the capacity for this segment is 10,978, according to the Department of Transportation's annual traffic data. And the volume is currently at 5,900. So roughly half of the evaluated capacity for this segment at this point in time.
So I just have a question, and just for my own edification. When they do a traffic count, did they consider that there's a truck or a trailer, and then the trailer with the boat? I mean, is that computed the same way that we would compute traffic flow for, you know, just general development?
Sure. And my understanding, that's a great question. My understanding is the Department of Transportation has a certain algorithm on which they generate trips for certain land uses. Storage facilities typically produce not as much traffic volume as some other commercial uses. Reason being, it's primarily a seasonal, a seasonal enterprise, if you will. So they experience more traffic volume...
During the fall season.
Exactly. During the warmer weather, the holidays, certainly. I couldn't necessarily speak to if they consider the size of the vehicles entering the site, but I'm sure that is evaluated within the driveway permit approval process.
I'm sorry. I tried not to interrupt.
No, not at all. Not at all. That's correct, Mr. Commissioner. Yes, sir. The, within the applicant's narrative, again, just to go back to my previous slide, the site is proposed to have 24-hour access with a combination lock to the entrance. And so moving along, while the subject property does not contain areas, special flood hazard areas, there may be characteristics of, characteristics, excuse me, of wetlands located on the property. Again, the exact location of those wetlands are going to be determined further down the line, if you will, during the site development plan process with the Planning Department. And I'll also point out here, you'll see the snippet of the permitted use table within our Unified Development Ordinance, and the storage of boats, water, and watercrafts outdoors or on dry stack storage is actually only permitted within the GB General Business Zoning District with a special use permit. So this would be the only district that that particular land use is permitted in with approval of this board. The subject property is located within the neighborhood mixed-use future land use category. This category allows for a transition between, say, more intense commercial uses and less dense residential neighborhoods. The neighborhood mixed-use category is primarily dedicated to non-residential uses that provide services, entertainment, and amenities to residents within a three-mile radius. However, the proposed use was found to not be consistent, to be inconsistent with the neighborhood mixed-use future land use category because it specifically states that establishments requiring large surfaces in excess of 20,000 square feet of parking are identified as inappropriate uses within this land use category. Our last, our last slide for staff's presentation is going to include the conditions to consider when issuing a special use permit for this project. The first five may look familiar, and that is because they are the standard conditions with all special use permit applications. I will note that conditions six and seven state that the applicant shall provide a seven-foot-high vegetated berm along Sluke Point Loop Road in front of the project area to further screen the proposed use. And also that any expansion of this proposed site past in excess of the three acres would require approval from this board.
Because the special use would only apply to the three acres...
Yes, ma'am.
As submitted.
Absolutely.
So if they wanted any expansion of this, they'd have to get another special use.
Absolutely.
They'd have to go through the process again.
Yes, ma'am. Essentially, they would have to amend their existing special use permit, revise it, if you will. And so that would require approval from this board.
And if they did it, provide the seven or comply with the berm? And are there any other provisions?
The other than...
That the UDO requires?
Other than the standard five, of course, you know, the applicant has suggested that the facility would be open 24 hours. You know, I suppose that could either be, and Mr. Thurman, correct me if I'm wrong, that could either be added as a condition or...
Is that the...
Sure. So, again, the applicant is seeking that the facility be in operation all hours of the day with a combination lock for its users. But again, that seven-foot-high berm as included as a condition was shown on the site plan. Essentially, that would turn into another requirement as staff evaluates the project through the site development plan process, if this was approved.
Have you talked with the developer about the lighting conditions that would be required? I'm assuming this stack is more than two boats high. So they have to operate equipment to pull them off the stacks. Is that a fair assessment?
I do not...
And if they're doing it 24 hours a day, that's going to require quite a significant amount of lighting?
So I do not believe so. I agree that the lighting would be on essentially for all hours of the day if the facility was open. The dry stack component, I do not believe is included in this request. That is just how the permitted use reads within the Center County UDO.
So this is just a lot to store boats.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not a dry stack.
That is staff's understanding.
This is for, like, they have a key card, they go in, they get their boat, they come back, and they put their boat on.
Absolutely. Rather than the key card, I believe it is proposed to be a combination lock, but exactly. Yes, ma'am.
And granting of a special use would not be granting of permission or a special use that would include the building of a dry stack?
Not necessarily. However, the use that is being requested in the special use permit does include the storage of boats on dry stacks.
It reads like approval of a dry stack.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is a whole lot different than a lot where boats are stored.
Absolutely.
So what are we doing here?
Sure. My understanding of the request is that the applicant is seeking to just have this special use permit for boats and trailers. I was not made aware of any dry stack element.
But is there anything in this application that, once allowed as a special use, would preclude them from doing that very thing and putting in dry stacks?
I don't believe so. Mr. Thurman, I might look to you here if that is eligible to be placed as a condition. Although the permitted use reads in the UDO, "storage of watercrafts and boats outdoors or on a dry stack structure," could a condition be placed that dry stack storage does not be included? Okay. Okay. Just to clarify.
I just want to know what we're doing.
Sure. And the request is simply "storage of boats and trailers outside within approximately 100 spaces across three acres."
But if dry stacks are put up, it could go from 100 spaces to 200 to 300, right?
Yes, ma'am, with a maximum...
There's quite a bit of difference between parking boats and a dry stack.
Absolutely.
We need clarification.
Absolutely. I'm not aware of any structure being proposed at this time, which does tell staff that a dry stack component would not be included in this request. The applicant and a representative is with us this evening to maybe clarify that for the board. But it is my understanding that this would be simply for parking boats and trailers on approximately 100 spaces.
So you understand what I'm saying? That was my concern with the traffic across the street from the park with dry stacks?
Yes, ma'am. I do understand. To speak to the lighting just a little bit, the UDO does require that all proposed lighting on commercial projects be downward casting and cannot affect adjacent properties.
So there's a mixed-use development plan for adjoining property? What, are there residential houses adjoining this property?
Yes, ma'am. Towards the northern portion of this property, not on the Kiwanis Park side, but to the northern portion is the Topsail Greens community.
But those three, how large is that? Is that the full, that outlined in red, is that the full three acres?
Outlined in red is 41.38 acres.
Forty-one?
Forty-one.
Okay, so the three acres...
Would be this portion of the property.
Would be near the Kiwanis Park and not near the current residences. Is that...
The three acres would be on this cleared portion of this property outlined in red.
Okay.
So the most eastern portion.
Thank you. Anything further? Are you done?
I am. I can answer any more questions if the board has any of us.
And I'm not, you know, arguing with you at any point, but there is quite a bit of difference in parking spaces and a triple dry stack for a special use permit, in my opinion. That's just what I have to say right now.
Absolutely. And I totally understand. I think, I think if it does help the board, there is a maximum height in the General Business Zoning District of 40 feet, which is still fairly tall. That would be roughly four dry stacks tall. That's right.
So, do we have any sign-ups?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Robert Batson, come on down. How are you tonight, sir?
All I'm doing is just trying to save the farm is all I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Just trying to save, I'm sorry, what was the last part of that sentence?
Trying to save the farm. See, in my opinion...
Save your farmland?
It was farmland and woodsland.
Okay.
Until all this got started and everything else, and I had to, I had to do all the plans.
So...
Those taxes are tearing me up on that property.
I'm sure. I'm sure that it is quite something. So what are you going to do here?
Maybe run a business, a trailer storage business. So I'm trying to do...
What kind of trailer storage?
Boat trailers. Handle the breakdown of fifth-wheel trailer.
Are you going to put in a dry stack?
Oh, no. No, you're not driving.
Okay. Describe for us what you're going to put out there.
Be going back to trailers, get them to stall, and that's it.
That's about what I figured. So will there be any attendants or heavy equipment needed out on that property?
Card. That's what I'm trying to get away from having to depend on anybody else doing anything. I've already had to shut one business down because we can't get the people to work. And you promise somebody something, you're pleased to do it.
How many acres you got out there?
Forty-one point something total.
Okay. Do you live on that property?
Yes, I do. In fact, I live in my mom and daddy's house, where they built.
How long have my mom and daddy been...
And I don't plan on going to work there. In fact, before that, I was over there where daddy was born in, in the old, old house. I bought it property back then.
Okay.
So I'm staying there too.
Okay. All right.
It's been your family's land a long time, and the property's been in your family's...
Over 100 years.
There you go. All right.
And then I don't think I'm getting rid of none of it unless daddy had run through some hard times farming too, because everybody's a farmer, and they guaranteed nothing. And they rented, and had, and did have to sell some land to pay the taxes. I'll be honest with you. I mean, if you do what you got to do, keep a farm.
There you go. Do you have any questions for Mr. Batson? Thank you, Mr. Batson. Do we have any sign-ups? Thank you, Mr. Batson.
George Marks? Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's George Marks. I live at 109 Current Lane.
And you're a Miami Dolphin fan?
Well, yeah.
All right. Go ahead.
We moved to this location in Bent Tree because it was a nice, quiet community.
And it still is.
Well, it steadily has grown, and the traffic has become a nightmare at Country Club and Sluke Point.
Yes.
And I know we've had...
And it's been a nightmare for quite some time.
Yeah. And there's been a lot of accidents there. I know their understanding of needing a traffic light there because of the amount of traffic there.
Oh, we have, we have a number you can call. Do we have the DOT number?
I believe we do.
Okay.
I think they have...
We can hook you up with that.
I think they have marked out the intersection, so I don't know if they're on the route to do that or not.
And Mr. McCoy can tell you that it'll take... And Mr. McCoy can tell you that it'll take you some time, but they may park you a temporary flash and red light like they did for us.
That won't help.
Till they get, till they get it more permanent. Yeah, patience.
I just, forgive me, because I just found out about this yesterday from my neighbors. And being in law enforcement for over 30 years, being a Pender County deputy for some time, I can tell you without any doubt whatsoever that this is going to draw crime. I can guarantee you the electronics on those boats are going to be stolen. And I don't care what kind of fence they put up-
Well, you know what? Boat owners get insurance, don't they? And I'm quite sure that they'll be insured. Tell me your name again.
George Marks.
George Marks?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So...
And not only will this attract crime to the facility, but also to the neighborhood. I guarantee those who are doing the theft in this place, the facility, will also do theft in the neighborhood. That just draws it. Believe me, I know. I've seen it and seen it and seen it. I was a Greensboro detective, and I came down here and became a detective at Pender County, and I've seen it. And I know what's in store. And the traffic, and not only the traffic, but anybody who's owned a boat knows that when you tow your boat out and you haven't used it in some time, you may blow a tire, you may blow an axle, and there you are on a two-lane road with ditches on both sides. And that's what it is. I recently just went over in my head of all the different places we have storage. There's a list of all the storages between New Haven County Line and Surf City. And some of them haven't even been built yet, but the signs are up for them.
Sir, where do you live in relation to this proposed special use?
If you would go down Sluke Point Loop Road to Country Club, I am the first street on the left.
How far do you live?
From this facility?
Yes, sir.
About a block. But this, I'm totally against it. I know that there's a lot of facilities here, and this is a list of them that people can choose from. This is going to increase the traffic on Sluke Point Loop Road and the turning at Country Club. It's just, it's not going to be a good sight.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Marks?
Madam Chair, did I hear earlier tonight the capacity is at 10,078? Is that right for port, for traffic?
I'm sorry. Say that again.
But not 10,078?
10,978.
10,978. All right, and we are only at what capacity? That's 7,500 now, is that correct?
The current volume, and these are, again, 2020 numbers from the Department of Transportation.
The current volume of this segment of Sluke Point Loop Road is at 5,900.
5,900.
So that's pretty much half of the capacity.
Yes, ma'am. Just over half.
Now, how much is this-
Excuse me, are those DOT numbers?
They are. Yes, ma'am, from 2020.
How much is expected from this project? Do we have any estimates?
And again, that would bring me back to, that's all examined should this request be approved during the site development plan process. I could not give an accurate number of how many trips a 100-space storage unit would generate at this time.
What I'm trying to decipher, we all know traffic is a big issue in Hampstead, okay? But I'm trying, I know that if it was zoned differently, it could increase the traffic even more. So I'm trying to also determine, is this a, is this special use, would it have a lesser of an impact than another type of special use request?
Sure. Or perhaps a rezoning of the property.
A rezoning?
The property is currently zoned GB, general business, which in that zoning district, residential uses are not permitted unless they are upper story or above a commercial use on the bottom floor. So a single-family home, a single-family subdivision on this property, as of now, would not be permitted in the current zoning district.
So it could not?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ellen Cougar?
How do you say it?
Kugel, just like Google but with a K.
Not Cougar. She's not a cougar, she's a kugel.
Thank you, Mrs. Newton.
You're welcome.
Thank you for-
You would do the same for me.
I'm sorry?
You would do the same for me.
Thanks. I appreciate this time to express our concerns regarding this development or special permit of the land. Appreciate the questions, Ms. Newton, I can't see, Mr. Tate, and everyone on the board. These are great questions to think about, right? The traffic, absolutely a concern for us. And I appreciate the analysis that you just brought up. It was two years ago, and there have been, I think, three, maybe even more developments. I know Wind Water's new, Songbird is new, 200-plus homes, right? And I appreciate that you're saying it's not at capacity of the 10,000, but I can sit on my back porch on any Saturday or Sunday, and what I hear is [imitates screeching brakes, fender benders, sirens] almost every Saturday and Sunday. And it's the traffic that's coming from Sluke Point, coming down Sluke Point, then you've got Country Club going out to Sluke Point, then you've got the Kiwanis Park Saturday and Sunday, all those kids in the car, moms and dads coming out from the ball field, right, Saturday and Sunday, and after school, you've got the school down there, right? And these three times that I'm talking about, Saturday, Sunday, and afternoons, that's when people go boating, right? So we're really concerned about the traffic implications, right? And what that may do, not just for the in-and-out, but more so the safety of the children, the safety of everyone using that road. It's a single lane, George, you mentioned. There are two ditches on each side, so there's no room for error. There's no margin for error. And again, I think someone mentioned it, you're pulling a trailer with a boat on it, and it's, most of the time, you're going to be coming and taking a left out of that facility, which is a harder turn to navigate. And so the traffic certainly is a concern. In addition, I think he's requested some water usage, and I would imagine that's for when people come and use their boat, and they're going to be washing it down. And, you know, we mentioned already, and Hampstead, we're growing exponentially, which is good for the community, right? But at some point, we have to say, when is enough enough, right? And I'm concerned, I hear whispers about our water infrastructure being taxed and water pressure issues. What will this do? I know it's not a tremendous amount of use, but it's a use. Is that going to impact the neighborhoods around and what our water pressure will be? Is there taxing done for that, right? Will these people be paying for water? I think Mr. Batson will be paying for the water, but what tax will it do to our already challenged infrastructure? So the water's another issue. And then I think someone brought, I think it was Mrs. Newton, you brought it up around the other implications or other uses of the land, right? Could it be a dry stack, right? Certainly, we don't want that, and it sounds like that's not his indication. But by allowing him and granting him permission of this special use permit, what else are we allowing him to do? And that's a big concern. We didn't even think, I don't know if you saw, so I'll just look at each other like a dry stack. We didn't think about that. But what else could he possibly have in do with this land? And as far as where we live and how much residential, I was one of the people that got the letter. So I think that says that I'm within 500 feet, right? So I'm pretty close. And I think some of the other neighbors here are very close, so there are residential very close within his intended use of the space. The lighting, I think, is, that's what I'm referring to.
I beg your pardon?
The lighting, because we're so close, how is that going to, you know, I understand that the lights will be downward focus, but how will that impact us? And of course, what George brought up is the crime.
How do we know that the crime will be? I'm just curious, okay? How, educated by trade, I'm just wondering this. Have there been some studies conducted that shows a correlation between this type of use and crime? Are we predicting that? Are there some actually definitive studies that you've seen?
As being a detective for Pender County, I know there were several thefts from boats, electronic gear in these storage facilities. I don't care how tall the fence is, as long as they have wire cutters, they're going in and taking them. I don't care if they have insurance or not. It's just, it's going to draw them to that area.
Like it would a Marina or a used car lot or...
Yeah. Capable of stealing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Newton.
Thank you.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great. How are you?
Great.
I think a number of concerns have been addressed already, but I just wanted to provide maybe a little bit of clarity as far as questioning about the traffic. So if 2020 was when that traffic report came out, obviously, there are things that have happened since then. And there are actually developments that have not completed, been completed yet, that will have an impact on the traffic. So that is still a bit of a concern. So yes, the 100 trailers or whatever may not require too much traffic and too much access, but if you pile that on top of everything else that's going on. I'm just wondering why it has to be 24-hour availability, because I would think if it was just during daylight hours, maybe the concern-
Obviously, you're not a fisherman.
Obviously not. So, but I was just looking for a way for the concerns about, you know, potential thefts, you know, because those are going to happen at night, if there's a way for that to be mitigated a bit. Those, I guess, are my continuing concerns. I got to tell you, as someone who, my wife and I survived the multi-use path, which is great to have, but living in that area during a time when that was happening, and Mr. Batson, I don't know if the peanut farms that we would go over, you know, to glean, once they had been harvested, of course, the stuff that was laying down on the grounds, if that's where that development is now in place.
See, people will steal. See, Mr. Marks, people will steal. He's been going over and gleaming in, Mr. Batson.
You notice I said "after" they had been harvested? But, but there was, what I'm talking about is not just traffic during certain times, but when the construction's happening. When the construction happened and the peanut farms, unfortunately, were no longer there, and these houses went in, there, you know, there's layers of stuff that's going to be happening that's going to have an impact on our lives during that time. How much construction is going to be happening for this particular project? You don't have to live close to it in order to be impacted by it. I will tell you, as a musician and a sound therapist, I'm very sensitive to what goes on when it comes to sound in my immediate area. And another resident has spoken to the fact that there's a lot going on on Sluke Point Loop Road now. And I'm certainly concerned, not just about the total volume of traffic, well, what about the mornings, the afternoons? Is there, you know, has there been some consideration given to the traffic flow and traffic pattern during peak hours? I think probably that's happened, but I want to make sure with the fishermen and fisherwomen, who are going to be having 24-hour access, that that's given some consideration to. Am I forgetting anything? Okay, thank you.
Miss Key says that's good. Thank you, sir. I have a question for staff. As part of the proposed conditions, if this should pass, would we be within our right to request that this special use would be contingent on adequate lighting to safeguard the properties that are being held there to require the seven-foot-tall berm, but require a more security-type fence?
Absolutely. And Mr. Thurman, I'll again look to you, but I believe it would be permissible to apply a condition in excess of the lighting requirements the UDO already requires, which is downward casting. So if there was a-
And downward casting and make sure that as a condition of that proactively increased lighting, that it all be downward sloping such that it wouldn't cause a nuisance to the surrounding homes.
Absolutely.
And that it be limited to storage spaces for 100 boats. Are we within our right to do that and request those conditions? One more thing, would we be within our right, or do we have any way to address our desire that there be a traffic control for this storage facility? Coming, would that be totally in accordance with the DOT?
It would be-
Evaluation and requirements?
Yes, ma'am. What I can speak to is that the current condition, I know there were mentions of how Sluke Point Loop Road is very narrow, and, you know, from driving that road, there is, there are, you know, ditches on either side.
All the more reason that we have some kind of-
We are at the liberty of the Department of Transportation when these sites are being analyzed from an access standpoint. It is not out of the ordinary to see special conditions that the applicant will be obligated to require or be obligated to comply with that are triggered from a driveway permit. So it's not simply the Department of Transportation issuing a permit of approval that will allow for this site to be accessed off of Sluke Point Road from a, and I'm just giving an example, from a 20-foot-wide driveway. We have seen required improvements as part of those driveway permits, such as, an example, a turn lane requirement. We, you know, that is not out of the ordinary as far as a roadway-
That would not be out of the ordinary for a large corporate entity.
Yes, ma'am.
But for this application, it would be an excessive expense, I would think. But would we be within our rights to put in as a proposed condition, again, for the safety of the surrounding citizens during peak hours, on the weekends, and during the summer, that we restrict any left turns out of that property? To alleviate that left turn problem? In the absence of a traffic control? Is that to...
And I don't want to, I want to stay in my lane. I just want to make sure that a condition wouldn't be placed that impacts the jurisdiction of the Department of Transportation.
And it would. So anything that we do with regards to traffic flow is not our jurisdiction. It's not our responsibility.
Because if DOT said, yes, we do think it's better to have left turns allowable, then whatever, then the applicant would have to-
Then the whole special use fails if we include that as a condition, because it's not our, it's not our problem.
That would, and that even leaves out any of the enforcement or anything else.
That's not the sorry, how you going?
Sure. So we can't do it. I was, I was trying to find a way to address each and every concern, but that's just not possible. So...
Conditions relating to the site itself would absolutely be allowable by this board.
So with regards to the lighting, with regards to the security fixing, and with regards to limiting the number of storage spaces?
Yes, ma'am.
To that proposed of 100 storage units?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, I believe the consensus-
And, Madam Chair, I believe the consensus of the board was the limit, the number of spaces, but also make clear that there would be no dry stacks. So in other words, it's not that you could put in 100-year dry stacks and have that.
Good point.
And, I mean, that we make that clear just in the conditions that...
For the purpose of completeness. All right, so...
I have a question for Mr. Marx.
And he wants, he wants to give you an answer.
He's got his driveway that looks right where Country Club comes out, but you've not seen this map. And I know it's not the scale, but the way I'm looking at it, his driveway for the boatyard is right in front of where Country Club almost comes out, and then you've got the immediate curve to the left, yeah.
And the other thing that I want to address is, you can't stop them from taking a left turn, because that's where they're going, is to the state land.
No, we can't do that.
That's where they're going, turning left.
Work with me, Mr. Marx. Just work with me.
Which one?
All right. So, Ms. Kugel.
Can I just add to that? It's not only to the Country Club entrance, Country Club Drive, but the Kiwanis exit and entry is right there.
And that's my concern. That's my concern, yes. So, do we have any other comments? Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I feel like I have a conflict of interest in this. The fact that Mr. Marx and I retired from the sheriff's office, and his life was my life, and my life was his life, we're on duty, and I do feel like I have a conflict of interest.
Well, I appreciate that, and are you asking to be recused from this deliberation?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Do I have, Mr. Attorney, Commissioner Rhodes?
There'd be a motion, and, in fact, the commissioner, you can make a motion yourself if you want.
I do make a motion to be recused from this.
Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, give me a moment, begin.
He's asking to be recused from this deliberation because of his experience with law enforcement.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
No, he made the motion. We need a second. Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
All right, thank you. So, I just have a comment in that area. Other than the county, Mr. Batson's probably the largest landowner on that street in that area. There could be a number of ways that, that he could put that land to use to allow him, as a longtime Pender County landowner, to pay his taxes, and I do understand the concern. So, but he's chosen to propose to, to establish a business, and if it were totally up to me, I'd like to support him in that endeavor with the limitations as has been discussed, but it's not my responsibility to make a motion, nor am I allowed to make a motion. So I'll just leave that as my comment.
Who's the Tague District?
Yeah, this is a tough one, because I can see the, we don't want to punish him because of the growth that's already happened, and I can respect it being the son of farmers, I can respect being a longtime property owner in the county. My concern is, though, if you decided to sell the property, and while you're not going to put a dry stock, storage there, will the new owner then come in and do that? And what limitation, I, and just until some of these questions are answered, even after reviewing this package, and we don't even have all information from core engineers really give us all of our impact at this point.
May, may I interject?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thurman.
Yes, ma'am.
If the special use is granted to this particular owner, doesn't the special use follow the land?
Yes.
So if it's not a problem for Mr. Batson, if it's not, if it's not allowed use for Mr. Batson, it won't be an allowed use for the subsequent owner?
With limitation, that's if you put limitations.
If we put these limitations that have been discussed.
And thank you, I was, I was going, and, and, you know, there are some times where, well, if you let the, you know, the nose under the tent, but a dry stack is such a...
What nose under what tent?
The nose under the tent. It's the camel's nose under the tent.
Oh.
But anyway, but then they could just keep expanding it. But a dry stack, as our recusal member, is a very different offer, because you've got to have the equipment out there.
That's exactly right.
The beeping is going on all the time.
And there's runoff, because it has to be paid.
And you've got the, yeah, I mean, it is a totally different...
It's a whole different world.
Than, than what Mr. Batson proposed.
Yes.
That would be a basis not to allow that expansion.
That's correct.
Because it would have a much greater impact on the neighborhood.
And Commissioner Tague?
Yeah, and a second, Madam Chair, is that while I, I'm going to consider the law enforcement officer tonight who's spoken as a, I think, an authority in this area, since he has credentialed in that area, so that's why I was asking, have there actually been studies produced to actually show this type of crime? And since I don't have that in front of me, I'm going to go on the information that's been presented with me tonight. So in that case, me personally, I'll make a motion to deny.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed?
I'm just, I'm just making the motion to deny carry, because we only had the recusal that were three board members, that's a four, so that's sufficient to make a decision, and to the majority of that four, the application has been denied. And I want to prepare an order and send it to the board for, that's no more of a... Which I think is that basically create adverse effects to the neighbors because of potential withdrawal of crime in the area, and I think that testimony was effectively that once criminals come in, they don't just, they try to see how much they can pick up.
It's a tough call.
It's very tough, because we don't want to make a decision based on an opinion that I had to make in what I thought was best interest, which doesn't stop the applicant from producing more evidence or coming back later to share that, but my vote is just on my own conviction.
So the special use permit, oh, the special use permit fails, Mr. Batson, so... So we'll move on to 21.3, request for special use permit revocation. Who will be presenting? Finally, Mr. Brand.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Madam Chair, may I swear?
Oh, yeah, I need to be sworn in.
Yes, anyone who's...
I'm not sure if it's continuing, because being, you don't have to be sworn in an officer or court, but are you speaking on the air? You, you can say that.
Mr. Keenan, are you speaking?
Yeah, I'm going to speak for you. And I'll, so I'm glad that's one of you, the crew, the whole crew, say what you've got.
Yes, sir.
And you were sworn in, sir? Yes, sir, okay.
All right, good evening, everyone. So up next on the agenda, we have a request for a revocation of a previously issued special use permit. Louis T. Nunnally, the fourth applicant owner, is requesting the revocation of a previously issued special use permit. The case was 10987, and that had a subsequent revision that was approved, 10987R. This was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in 2013 initially. So I'll go through a little bit of the history there. The property in question is located near the intersection of Shaw Highway and Old Maple Road, Old Maple Hill Road. This was previously known as the...
Is there a gun club in there?
Excuse me?
Was there a shooting club?
Yes, the Gun and Wing Shooting Club. It was a private recreation club that was approved. It was Mr. John Bernie got that special use permit. So just to give a little more background, the Commissioners approved the special use permit for Mr. John J. Bernie III on August 19th, 2013, and then he had made a application to revise the special use permit the following year. I believe that revision was to expand the hours of operation. I think they expanded it on Sundays to allow some shooting on Sundays. So furthermore, that revision was June 22nd, 2015, so two years after the initial approval. Another caveat to this, in 2014, February 19th, the Board of Adjustment granted a height variance to allow the tower, the pheasant shooting tower, which I will clarify that that has since been removed by Mr. Nunnally, the current property owner.
Is the gun club still in operation? Is it still in use as a...
No, ma'am, and the applicant is wishing to revoke the special use permit because he has no wish to continue that use in any capacity.
They've taken all the targets there, put them down, sure.
They've removed the tall pheasant tower, which was about 40, 40 feet or so. They've removed the tower. So they would, I believe they're, and I'll let the applicant...
It was, it was, who's the owner of the property now?
The current owner is Mr. Louis Nunnally, the fourth.
Okay, so it's going to be, well, he wants to revert to a privately-held property?
Correct.
Not for a gun club anymore? He wants to just revert it to a private ownership?
Correct.
And it would be an RA zone?
The property, the property is zoned RA, yes, ma'am, rural agriculture.
So with just no special use?
Yes, because the special use permit has conditions on it that are impacting things he wants to do with the property.
And Mr. Nunnally is a sole owner?
Yes, ma'am. As of earlier this, earlier last year, I think around February 2022, yeah.
All right.
And that's all I have. If the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Isn't it more va, Madam Chair, you have any questions?
Yes.
Isn't the property more valuable with the SGP status that it has attached to it now?
I can't speak to that, but I would think so, yes. With a certain entitlement for a commercial endeavor would add value to the property, but I'm no tax expert, but that is my basic understanding of that.
So the reason that he wants to convert it to a private property ownership is certainly not...
He wants to continue to do what he's allowed to do.
Will you talk to him?
Yeah, and I can bring up the applicant, but he's wishing to do what he's allowed to do by right, you know, residential, agricultural, there's some agricultural activities out there. He has no intention to do a gun club or a shooting club.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm for property rights. I really do believe in that. I'm just curious, I don't see many people coming forward to board that's asking the reverse, usually they're asking for an approval.
We sent a crowd out this earlier.
Yeah, that's true.
It goes back to shoulder creek there.
And that's pretty, yeah.
So just to add a couple more points...
Well, we're done.
Okay.
We'd like to hear from them.
Well, one, one thing, if I may, Madam Chair.
Do you recommend it?
I recommend this action. It's not my place to recommend this action, but I have no personal or professional opposition.
There's nothing that would negatively or be adverse to use as an RA in our UDOT?
No, ma'am. So there is one last thing I wanted to mention. This is, this language is from the ordinance, basis for revoking a special use permit. You can see item two, that the use for which the approval was granted is not being executed. That would certainly qualify in this situation, that the use which the SGP was granted for was, has ceased to exist or has discontinued the use. So it certainly meets the qualifications of the board to grant that SGP, but that will be the board's finding.
So in this circumstances, it would be the use for which such approval was granted is no longer, or has ceased to exist?
Yes, sir, either of those would, would satisfy that requirement, just for the board's knowledge.
Thank you for pointing that out. We do appreciate it.
And I would too, as well.
So it's item two and four, as the basis?
Two would qualify...
I don't know if it's being for heat or not, but two is enough.
Yeah, two is enough, but we'll let the applicant speak to that a little further if he wishes.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Nunnally?
Thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you for being here.
Any, any questions I can answer?
Yeah, so I think inquiring minds want to know, why, why would you want to revoke this special use permit?
Well, obviously, Mr. Bernie used it as a commercial operation.
And it's a nice, it was a beautiful...
Beautiful piece of property, and we want to, we're, we never intend to use it as a commercial, have any commercial use whatsoever. It's just going to be a place for my family to use recreationally. We were, there's a pre-existing cabin on site. We were not aware that a special use permit was even with the property, and we went to get a building permit to try to add one bedroom on in addition. That's when we found out there's a special use, and they said under the guidelines of the special use permit, we couldn't add on a bedroom, so that's kind of where we are now, so...
We'll wait to that.
Right on the creek, there'd be good potential. That land right on the creek, shoulder creek.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Right on shoulder creek.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, a lot of potential there.
So this is your district, sir. Any more questions for our applicant?
I don't have any, I just wanted to say that I think what a man of valor to be able to come here tonight and speak with integrity, you could have kept it with the special use, but you preserved it for your and your family for a long time.
Nobody wants to add a bedroom to the cabin.
Yeah, I like that. I like that.
That's why we're here.
My wife and mother really want the bedroom added to the cabin, actually, so...
All right. So, thank you.
That's my, my district, I'll make a motion for approval. Okay. We've got another sign up.
Okay, sorry, say sorry, sorry. Mr. Keenan, now don't hurt yourself.
I'm not. Basically, I live across the creek, and if the creek wasn't between me and this property here, we would actually be adjoining landowners.
So you no longer have to dodge the bullets?
Exactly, and, and that's a, that's a valid point, because there were times that we had bullets that came across our property, would land over where the game landing, boat, boat landing was, and also would fall out into the creek, and we've had to call the sheriff's office at least one time to come out there and investigate that, because that was a public health and safety issue. And so I'm very much in favor of this particular special use permit being revoked. Also, by being a resident there, when that use was expanded in 2015 to allow for Sunday shooting, basically, I'm at home, and all I hear all day, all afternoon long, and of course, all day on Saturdays is shooting, so I'm very much welcome to eliminate this nuisance. And that property prior to 2013 was exactly what, what Mr. Nunnally's asking for today, which is to be for a private residential recreational use, and that's it.
A quiet recreational use.
And of course, right now, all the timber around there is being cut, so that's a lot of noise, but, I mean, it's, it's very vacant, but, but definitely I support what Mr. Nunnally is seeking to achieve here today, and I'd ask you to support that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
And there's nothing like, on Sunday morning here, round after round of ammunition.
Sounds like a war during the season.
Wait a minute, I was on the board when we voted to approve that in 2015, and I remember that. I remember that. That was controversial.
I remember it.
I voted against it.
I can.
I think.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 21.4, request for special use permit to allow for the development and operation of a church.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, our, our final application this evening, another special use permit application, Grace Community Church of Topsail, applicant on behalf of Norma Seymour owner, is requesting approval of a special... is requesting approval of a special use permit that would allow for the construction and operation of an approximately ten thousand square foot church. And this use is permitted within the RP Residential Performance zoning district.
Norma Seymour being the current property owner?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the proposed use permitted in the U D A?
It is permitted with, of course, approval of a special use permit. It's actually permitted as of right in five of the ten zoning districts within the county. This particular zoning district, RP, is the only use that a religious organization is permitted in with a special use permit.
But not by right?
Not by right.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
Thank you for the clarification.
A majority of the surrounding zoning of this property is actually consistent with its current zoning. It's RP Residential Performance on every corner of this property and all of the properties surrounding it.
Are there any pre-existing conflicting commercial entities?
Immediately south, and I'll flip to the aerial view of the property, immediately south of this property, it's located on Hoover Road, is South Topsail Elementary School.
But that wouldn't necessarily conflict. I'm talking about adult bookstore or...
None that I am aware of. I think primarily...
A bar?
A bar, no.
Strip club?
Not a strip club, I don't believe.
We don't want to get those citizens angry with us.
No, ma'am. I, you know, primarily, the surrounding land uses are residential with the exception of South Topsail Elementary School. The applicant's site plan is here on the screen. You might note that they are proposing to maintain some of that existing vegetation that exists, which, in accordance with the Unified Development Ordinance, is encouraged to actually supplement some of the required plantings of a required buffer along the property line.
It looks as though they have three driveways. Is that correct?
Similar to our first special use permit request, the driveway and their access points on Hoover Road are going, they're going to be dictated by the Department of Transportation.
Is there enough property for appropriate amount of parking?
It appears so, yes, ma'am. As proposed, this parking would comply with the Unified Development Ordinance. The applicant's actually proposing one hundred and ten spaces for a just less than ten thousand square foot church, which includes the Assembly Hall and the worship area. I will note again, the special use permit is the first of two stops with the site being developed. During that site development plan process with planning staff, parking's going to be further evaluated to ensure compliance.
So, it'll be three acres to be cleared, another acre and a half will be cleared again.
Yes, sir. The approximate acreage that's proposed to be cleared, again, that's going to be evaluated at the site development plan process. There are certain permit requirements from the state's Department of Environmental Quality, such as stormwater erosion and sedimentation control. With a church in a project of this size, you can absolutely anticipate those permits being required. And I'll note here, the applicant has included within their submitted narrative that the church, the religious worship services, would take place on Sunday mornings from ten AM to twelve PM, Wednesday evenings from six PM to eight PM of every week. And the applicant also stated the property will be used for a midweek men's Bible study from five AM to seven AM on Tuesday mornings, and a midweek women's Bible study from nine thirty AM to eleven thirty AM on Thursday mornings. And that the regularly scheduled Bible study hours are intended to minimize traffic impacts during normal school hours. The complete narrative that the applicant submitted is included in the board's packet as attachment number one.
Any downside to this?
It was found to be consistent with our comprehensive land use plan. The future land use category, medium density residential, that this property is located in specifically states that neighborhood-scale institutions such as religious and civic organizations are deemed appropriate uses in this future land use category, when they are limited to less than twenty thousand square feet, which a ten thousand square foot church, of course, complies with. So, staff did find the proposal to be consistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive land use plan.
Proposed conditions?
The proposed conditions are the standard, standard six conditions. With that last one being an expansion of the proposed site is, of course, going to require a revision of the special use permit that would need to be approved by this board.
No other special considerations to consider of conditions?
We did pull some traffic data, again, for this request. This segment of Hoover Road is approximately at a quarter of its rated capacity. So, the current volume is thirty-six hundred and the capacity is thirteen thousand eight hundred.
Is that from a two thousand and twenty study?
Again, it is from the two thousand and twenty.
Do we have any major developments or any known increased traffic since two thousand and twenty? That would...
On this segment of Hoover Road, within the last two years, no, ma'am. There is an existing multifamily project closer towards Highway seventeen off of Hoover Road, Sparrows Bend. That would be the closest and most recent project I can think of in this area.
Does anyone have any questions for Stan?
I have a question, Ms. Newton. Madam Chair, if you're ready. Under the narrative, when it limits the Bible, and I appreciate the church's proactiveness and providing information, was that required to provide? Because I'm concerned about they're limiting the hours of worship. We know that now nine thirty is a popular time. Eleven o'clock, years ago, times would change different. We had different services times. And then it says specifically, men's Bible study will be held at a specific noted time. I was just wondering, do that have to be included? I don't want them to be in a position that limits their worship or limits what their ability to do in the future.
And that's a great question. It would not need to be included as a condition if that was the board's wish. It could be left out of the conditions of approval. I think at this point, more or less, it is just a statement that the applicant has included.
I understand, but I don't want someone to come back and oppose it later and then have the church dinners in a situation that they can't operate in hours that they may have been directed to do by Heavenly Father.
It won't be included unless we include it as a special condition. Affirmatively, that was just narrative language in the application. No, that was just a point of clarification. They were just so that we could further analyze the traffic.
Another project in close proximity to this site would be the location of the Hampstead Bypass as well. You can almost see on this map here. I believe this segment of Hoover, just north of the site, is where one of the exit ramps of the bypass would be located. Yes, ma'am.
That's very good. Even better. So, any further questions of Stan? Thank you. Should we have any signups? Mr. Attorney, can we ask if they're all, if there's any opposed?
I'll go ahead and speak loud. Is anybody here in opposition to Mr. Wood?
This is yours?
And Mr. Merrill and Mr. Vaughn?
I'd like to say I've gone a member of that church. I've been to several times. Some really good people.
All right, I think at this time, without any signups opposing this, I think we're ready for a motion.
It's my district. I'm glad to make a motion for approval. This is a growing church. And in the community, they do a whole lot to help here as well and look forward to attending some of their services where they currently located at in the new worship center as well.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Congratulations. Thank you all for coming. If you still want to speak, we'll listen, but... Oh, no, we don't want that.
Which one is the pastor? I'm just curious.
Yeah, who is the pastor?
He's the pastor, the guy with the hat. The vest on.
Yeah, okay, got you.
So, I guess you'll be passing the hat for a fundraiser, right? For the building fund? I can't hear too good either. Good night.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Absolutely.
See you soon. All right.
See you, Charlie.
Unless there's anything further that I'm not aware of, I'm ready for a motion. Where, Charlie?